Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the town of Lewisboro Town Board meeting preceded by a work session. You're gonna have a work session on our, uh, the town finance, uh, finance updates. Uh, for those in the room, there's an exit to the front of, uh, towards the front of the building and an exit to the rear. Um, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the Lord, and to the highest state of America, and to the right power of which stands one nation under God. In this small, in this small, in this small justice forum. Alright. Alright, first I'm gonna introduce, uh, folks that are here to support us with the finance updates. So from capital market advisors, there are our municipal finance, um, uh, folks. And we have here Janet Morley and Jack, um, Panino. And, and then on, over Zoom, we have, uh, Ewan Poe, who is our bond counsel, with Norton Holbrun, Rose.
Hi, everybody.
Hello, hello, Ewan. Um, actually, we put it off on screen here so people can see you. Hold on a second, I gotta turn on the. Okay. Okay, now you can say hello, Ewan. Hello. Alright, so, what was that? Alright, so first we're gonna start with, uh, Annie, our controller, Annie Burnham. She's gonna start with a, uh, an overview of our 2024, uh, performance, town's performance from a finance perspective. So I'm gonna go ahead and share, uh, these are about four slides that we're going to review.
Did you send the email?
I sent it.
She sent it.
Earlier in March. I was looking at it today, now we'll be able to.
Yeah.
With the chart?
Yeah.
Oh, um, I don't have, I can't share, uh, shot.
Maybe we make your post.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, hi, everybody. Um, it's good to be here to present some preliminary 2024 numbers. And I say preliminary and everything says unaudited because the auditors are coming the week of April 21st. So they will give the final rubber stamp on the 2024 results when they're here. I think they usually issue the report in June after they come to the fieldwork in April. So we'll start with 2024 town revenue.
So preliminary, that term basically means for our purposes, yet to be audited.
That's right. So, and also the reason why we review this in March and not, say, January or February is because there are a lot of 2024 bills still being paid in the second check run in March. So we make sure that everything is captured. And the best way to do that is to wait until all those 2024 bills have been processed. So I think Cheryl confirmed that this is the last of the 2024, 2024 releases. So now we should be able to get a picture of 2024 and then also Q1, 2025 at the same time.
And when you say, for, from the account, when you say rubber stamp, that means that when the auditors look at our books, that everything's clean and straight?
Yes.
Or everything measures up?
They will make sure everything measures up. They will give advice on the fund balance. They will give their determination of the shape of the town. They'll present a balance sheet and an actual P and L based on the 2024 info. That usually comes from, yes, profit and loss. Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you for that reminder. Sometimes I speak in too much finance terms.
Is that, at that point, will we be able to best see how our decision on how we decided the budget for 2025 works out for us will be?
Well, we won't have an idea of how we are against the budget of 2025 till we're further into 2025. This is really just gonna be how 2024 ended up.
That's right.
Sorry. Yeah, that's okay.
The extent of it is in 2025 that, you know, you can look back at 2024 and say, well, we based it on that, but it turned out this way. You could conceivably, you know, start.
You can start to see a pattern if you wanted to. And, um, after we get 2024 together, in addition to having the audit report, I'm gonna send something out to all of our department heads so they can see where they ended up. And that's like a starting point for them to start to look at 25, if anything went awry in 24, if we're gonna see it again in 2025. Um, that's how, and then that'll kick off the next budget process. It's like a big cycle and that'll start in like the summer when we start to look at their 2025.
I know. I'm just concerned that, you know, we decided to handle the budget process different for 2025. When we took our fund balance into consideration in whether we were gonna break the task cap. So we're very interested to see
Yeah.
the health of our fund balance.
Yes.
Based on those decisions.
Yes.
Before we get to November this year, that's all.
Oh, yeah, for sure. So when we get the audit report, um, that will have a, a, a whole section on the fund balance and how it relates to a percentage of our expenses and their comfortability with that number. And actually, CMA looks at our fund balance also when they give advice on bond issuance and our debt service.
Thank you.
Sure. Uh, so the first slide here is the town revenue and it's, um, the two, the two bars are actual versus budget. Orange is actual, 2020, the blue is the budget. So majority comes from sales tax. And then parks and rec and building and mortgage tax are big hitters. And then the rest is the other departments that make up the totals. Tony, if you scroll down a little bit, you can see it in numbers, if you wanted to see numbers. So overall, town revenue came in over a million dollars higher than the 2024 budget. So that might give you one step towards being comfortable with dipping into the fund balance for that.
Is, is there any, um, general observations as to why? I mean, that's good news. So, but that's, so we're talking the percentage, um, so 12, 14% above. So is that based upon making conservative projections?
Correct.
And how we, and how we do things or anything else?
Correct. It's mostly the conservative projections and versus, you know, building them really well. And they, they budgeted pretty low considering they came in at 1.3 million. Uh, but there are outlying things in that that you can't rely on that year to year. So they know their, I think their 2025 budget figure is similar to what they budgeted for 2024.
And we did very well with sales taxes.
Very well with sales tax, yeah.
And on the other, on the other side, no unforeseen large advances, I guess.
Well, we haven't gotten to the expected yet.
Just on revenue side, okay.
Okay, so another, the next slide we can go to, Tony. This is a pie chart view of the town revenue and how that's broken down. That breaks down the 8.3 million. You see the impact of sales tax on that. The parks and rec is a big chunk. So that's just another view. So we can go to the next one. Now we'll start looking at the expense side.
And, 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 like you made, uh, all these slides, we're gonna put them on the finance webpage.
Yes, I'm gonna share them to be uploaded, but with the note that these are preliminarys. So then the bill will be finalized when we get the final P, profit and loss and balance from the auditors. So these are the department expenses. So as you can see, parks and rec, um, brings in a great amount of revenue. And also it costs a lot to run the program. So that's where their budget looks so much higher. But they did come in under budget for what they're, for their spending, which is good news. Um, and then followed by police, maintenance and shared is like the facilities and, um, shared services. And then those are the other departments of the town after that. Court, the assessor, building, finance, clerk, supervisor, tax, and fighting court. So then this one does show percentages of variance versus where they came in. Overall, actual expenses in total by department were under budget. So that's, it, there's ups and downs, as you can see, between the departments, but overall it came in under. And then the next slide, this is, um, the highway. So this is a little bit more detail on how a highway spends their money. Um, and where they came, they also came in under budget versus 2024 as of now, unless anything large posts in this past month, they'll know. But right now it looks like they came in 51,000 on the budget.
Considering all the work they did, that's pretty.
It is. It's a, it's a tough budget to manage and John did a great job. Um, then, and then the last one, okay, this is what I call non-departmental expenses. It's the library, it's our debt service, which CMA is gonna speak to, uh, when they do their part of the presentation. And these are just townwide expenses that don't necessarily fall under, under a budget line as a department. So these were, we had some higher ones here, which we can dig into and see why we came over budget on some of these. Um, looks like LES rent. I think we knew about that. There was an additional charge. It was an increase in their rent versus what was budgeted.
I think that also includes, um, I think the, uh, some of the other sub agreements that we have with them.
It could.
So because the, the rent alone is about 120,000 a year. So I think that's, that falls under that overall, um, category. We have the LES agreement.
Okay. Right, yes, okay.
That's all in there.
Yeah, look at that. Um, and that's, those are, that's the breakdown that I provided as of now for 2024. So I think the town looks like it's still on the same great track that it was on before I got here and I'm hoping to keep it that way. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions coming to the board?
Just for that, friends at home, uh, ALS, the Advanced Life Support, that's
That's the, um, ambulance.
Westchester AMS.
Police, okay.
Yes. That's a contract.
Okay.
Um, set price every year.
Sure. Um, just to sample some categories, we have 115,000 and other.
Oh, so other, I mean, I can look at that breakdown for, it's, it's a lot that comes up to the 115. Nothing is in itself larger than the 69,000 that's above it. So it's an aggregate of other expenses within.
Okay.
So I can break that down further. I know I did that with the budget. I, whatever I called other, I had a subsequent graph that showed the breakdown of the other. I can do that for this also.
So, and I was a great share of thought, like you have this pie chart here, it doesn't have the actual, um, tax, I mean.
No, so this is, um, the, basically what we levy in taxes is supposed to cover our expenses. So the town revenue is budgeted differently. We know that what the warrant is for the tax levy, so that's a budgeted number that doesn't vary.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, another version of this might.
If you, yeah, so that'll show basically a half of, uh, of the pie for our tax, um, revenue. And then everything else would be much smaller, but yes. I could do that, sure. Yeah. I can do those. And I'll put those in the versions that end up on the website.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Janet.
You're welcome.
Okay. So next we'll jump to Janet and, and Jack. Um, so let me get your file displayed here.
Um, happy to be here. Uh, just by way of brief introduction for folks that don't know us. Again, my name is Janet Morley, my colleague, Jack Anito. We are with the Capital Markets Advisors. And we are licensed and registered with the SEC and the NSRB as municipal advisors. Our role is to act in fiduciary capacity to advise our clients with respect to debt issuance and to assist them when they enter the capital markets to structure and sell bonds and notes on their behalf. We, uh, are one of the largest municipal advisors in the state. We represent over 300 clients, counties, towns, villages, and school districts. So we've had a very long, uh, relationship with town of Lewisboro and I'm very happy to be here tonight. Um, and Supervisor asked us to, to join you today, kind of give you a little oversight and update about matters that relate to your debt. And thought we might start talking about, uh, the town's credit rating. The town is rated by Standard and Poor's. Last year, the town had an upgrade in its credit from a double A rating to a double A. That is just one notch below the highest rating possible. Now, for S and P, their own culture, the highest rating achievable is a triple A. Then double A, plus, double A flat, double A minus. And then the categories go single A with modifier, triple B with modifier, and then below that, your junk bonds. So the town is very well positioned from a credit perspective. Ratings are very important when you go into the debt markets because they determine your level of market access as well as the interest rate that you go into pay on your debt. Um, so having that upgrade last year was always very significant, um, and, and welcome news. Um, those ratings become even more important if you are in a rising interest rate environment because the spread, the spread that you'll be working with, the credit spread becomes more pronounced between rating categories in a rising interest rate environment. The, uh, the way that Standard and Poor's, as well as the other rating agencies view credit, uh, they look at, uh, multiple categories. They'll look at your credit fundamentals, which are primarily your wealth indicators, the size of your tax space, your assessed valuation in town, your property values. Um, they will also look at your financial picture and trends. Do you produce structurally balanced budgets? Do you, uh, tend to add to your fund balance or have at least break evens with your M and C real behavior? What is your cash position? What is your fund balance? They'll look at management, um, a lot of that is reflected on a how go new plan. Do you have policies and procedures in place? What is your long-term financial goals and management, things of that nature? Um, and then lastly, the cat, the last category would be debt increased costs, which includes not only your outstanding debt, bonds and notes, but also your pension obligation and your OPEB obligations.
And, and OPEB is?
Is other than pensions. So that tends to be your retirement benefits. Um, in New York, uh, those tend to be fairly high, generally speaking, not just for New South, all municipalities in New York, they tend to have fairly high OPEB levels. And unfortunately, we are not allowed to reserve for those liabilities to pay debt. Um, but the rating agencies all take into consideration that future liability when they view your overall credit picture. What they're looking at, uh, in terms of their ratings, they review the metrics, the data points. And then they use subjective factors that might influence the rating, uh, to notch up or down, uh, the base statistical data. And the rating is really a guide for investors to, um, give them an outlook as to a municipality's ability and willingness to pay their debt on time and in full. So it's a shorthand for investors to, to gauge, to gauge credit. Uh, but the town is very well placed in that regard and, um, a lot of hard work and, and good results. Excuse me, uh, led to the, uh, to the upgrade, uh, last year.
Question on the upgrade, how do we compare with other municipalities?
Yep. So, uh, Standard and Poor's rates just over 220 municipalities in, uh, the state of New York, not county, counties, it's towns and villages. Um, it is very difficult, I will tell you, to get triple A rating. There's only 13 in all of New York. Next best rating, the double A, plus, uh, there's only 15% of those S and P rated municipalities in New York that have a double A plus. Uh, so you're in a, in very good position again and compare very favorably with your neighbors.
When, um, the bond rating went from double A to double A plus was, I don't know if you call it, it was an excellent report issue. Here's why we're increasing your credit rating. Here's a whole bunch of reasons why. Is there, is there any elaboration on that?
Yeah, so there was a rating report and, you know, we shared, we provide additional copies if you like. Uh, but they definitely go into their whole analysis, um, your rating. The trends have been positive. Um, your fund balance has increased. And, um, well, they indicators are solid. It's all really trend analysis. Um, and those data metrics that they're looking at in terms of fund balance, cash, warrants, and wealth indicators. It's a bit, uh, a little bit of everything. I will tell you the, the, the one thing that they express, um, wouldn't say concern, but that, um, is not as strong as other areas, meaning, well, financials and so forth, are the OPEB and pension liabilities. They are significant relative to other, um, perhaps double A plus credits. Again, it's a very difficult metric to get your hands around because it's, it's liability. Um, uh, reserved for it. OPEB, um, are, there's limited ways to control OPEB. Much of what municipalities tend to do, uh, is try to negotiate healthcare benefits to get employees and such to contribute greater amounts to covering or to try to shop, um, insurance. Very difficult. Not, it's not easy, quite frankly. And it's not unusual in, uh, to see that comment from the rating agencies with respect to OPEB. Uh, when, keep in mind that when the rating agencies are looking at those issues, they are trying to make sure that a double A plus in New York is in some ways comparable to a double A plus in Texas, Illinois, California. Different states have different, um, debt and liability structures. There are states that don't have OPEB at all. Um, and so that, that is something that they will always take a look at, that outstanding long-term liability. Um, I, it don't, I'm not just, I'm not suggesting to you that it's, I'm worried about your rating in any way. But I'm pointing out that when you review the S and P report, they will talk about all the really positive factors and trends. They will make note of the fact that OPEB and pension is a little high.
And why is that?
Uh, you know, your pension, your contract negotiations over the years, um.
High, high versus, um, John would standard, I wonder, you don't have any relatives?
It's high within all municipalities in New York, quite frankly. But if you're looking at the, uh, double A plus category, that cohort, um, that metric, you know, when they look at each of these, it, it seems a little high.
Seems high, okay. Could that have anything to do with the fact that we're in Westchester and another connects double A?
It's high everywhere. It's high. Frankly, it's, it's high everywhere in New York. It, it just is. I mean, they're within, within margins.
And that, that report, the, uh, the S and P report is on our website, I'm pretty sure. When we were upgraded, I'm pretty sure we posted that. So if anyone is interested, we, we go on there, I think it's in the finance page.
So despite that particular metric being a little bit on the high end, the town still achieved the upgrade.
Yeah.
Yes, the, the, on the far left-hand side. So you look at the column on the left-hand side, it's the last option.
Town rating 2024.
The link is called town rating 2024. If anybody has problems finding it, just shoot us an email and we'll talk you through it.
Okay, should we jump to the first tab? Sure.
So we thought we'd give you a little graphic and understanding of the town's current outstanding debt profile. Uh, and we've broken it down. There are, so there are a number, there are a few bond issues and EFC issue, Environmental Service Corporation issue that are, um, reflected in this graph and, and these totals here. Um, we've broken it down into two categories, general obligation debt and water and sewer debt. General obligation debt is the pledge of the full faith and credit of the town to repay your debt. It's the highest form of security there is. Uh, and it's generally paid for by property taxes. Um, water and sewer debt is still general obligation debt issued on behalf of the town. However, we've broken it out because it is mostly supported by user funds, water and sewer. Um, so you can kind of get a better picture of what's paying for what. What you can see, the blue line is the geo debt, the water and sewer is in orange. Uh, what you can see, of course, is that you have, the town has debt that is falling off, uh, over time. And so there is some potential capacity for new debt if you chose to kind of backfill into, into that, um, the more recent levels of debt service. Uh, 2025, I will tell, tell you, looks a little high relative to 2026. And that is because there is a bond anticipation note of $320,000 coming due in June. We've, we're showing it here, assuming that the town is going to pay off that ban in June from available funds. Uh, but that's not a requirement. You have flexibility. You could choose to pay off some of it, all of it. Or you could choose to roll it over another year into another ban, a new ban. For these purposes here, we just wanted to show it, assuming that you were going to pay off the entire ban on available funds, uh, when they, when it comes to.
And if I can add, that ban of 320,000, that was the additional funds for paving.
Paving.
That we decided to, that we didn't include in the original bond, the 2024 bond. So we ended up getting a, a ban for that.
Right, when we talked about rolling it into it. Didn't we?
Well, no, we, we, at some point we can, but here it depicts us paid it off. Cause I, I think that's the better way to go is to pay off that, that ban.
You can't roll bands over, uh, forever.
No, you can, you cannot. Also, the bands, uh, bond anticipation notes are one-year instruments. And you have the ability to roll them over. Um, you can stay in bands for a total of five years, after which time you have to either pay off in full or convert it to long-term bonds, assuming that the period of probable usefulness for what we financed as a ban exceeds five years.
Roll it over and you maintain the same interest rate?
You do not. What you're actually doing is selling a new ban, the proceeds of which pay off your old one and you get a new interest rate.
So the decision may be based on the cost of the different types of, you know, if, when you roll it into a competent, uh, node or, or, um, the ban depends on those rates.
Because it also depends on other, or a number of other factors. You know, bands give you the greatest flexibility when you're issuing debt because when you get to the end of that one-year period and decide to pay more than the minimum down, if you so choose, if you have excess funds, if you have grant money coming in, um, if your project came under budget, bands give you the greatest flexibility in that regard.
So it's like a resident of the mortgage, there's no prepayment penalty.
You're, 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 you pay at the end of the, at that end of the year. Insurance at the end of the year and you can decide how much you're going down before you issue a new ban. And so what we often recommend is, particularly if you're expecting grant money, you want to be in bands because you, or if you, you need money to get started, but you don't know how you fix your final cost, you're gonna find out. You don't want to go into long-term bonds, usually. Um, if you are waiting on grant money or waiting on final costs, because once you go into a bond, you cannot prepay for a period of eight years typically. Um, some call periods are longer, 10 years. We always structure the shorter call period of eight years. Uh, so you don't want, you want to bond, lock in the net amount, not the rest. Right? You don't want to be paying long-term debt service on a higher number if you think you've got grants coming in, for instance.
And then lock in period of that's when you cannot prepay.
It's called the no-call period. The bonds are not callable.
Okay.
For, for eight years, you cannot prepay. Once you hit that eight-year period, then you can do a, you can finish it. You can call, you can refinance, uh, your bonds or you can call in a portion of the bonds, um, to the extent you have excess funds or anything.
Yeah, so, so last year what we did is we took the, uh, existing bands and we converted them to alternative, uh, bond. And, and I think the main reason for that was to, uh, because it wasn't attractive rate, um, when it looks on bond.
If you expect rates to go up, better to go ahead and convert so you can lock it in or.
So, you know, it's a very good question, particularly in this interest rate environment, you get that question all the time. Um, you know, it's very difficult, as you can imagine, to predict interest rates a year from now. Um, you know, the markets are such that, um. There's not a lot of consistency or, or view, we always take the view, uh. We know what interest rates are today, we'll base our decisions on today, I can tell you that rates are, uh. From a historic perspective, still very attractive, we're looking at ban rates, um. Slightly over three percent plus or minus, we're looking at long term rates, fifteen year rates. Under four percent, maybe mid threes to low threes, thirty year money is still under five percent.
Sounds like it's not a bad idea to go ahead and, and lock it in. Because there, there's so much uncertainty, um, we're not, not likely to see a crash down lower.
If we end up in a recession, you could, certainly, but again, it's just very hard to predict, particularly in the current environment. Uh, you know, we, we're, we're dealing with tariff policy that's fluctuating, that has inflationary suggestions. Um, you know, it's just very difficult to give you a clear view of where interest rates might be. A year from now, uh, the other thing that's going on in the market right now is some. Um, inversion, referred to as inversion of the yield curve, where short term rates are high relative to long term rates. So for instance, as I mentioned, one year note rates are plus or minus three percent. That's a one year rate, you can get ten year money, a rent for around, say. Five year money.
Isn't that a signal that, you know, maybe challenges ahead?
It's generally, it's, yeah, it's generally is a signal of, uh, first of all, that. The buyers of one year notes are different from the buyers of long term bonds. So you're dealing with different, slightly different market participants, but also it is the indication of some. Um. Stresses, uh, and, 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 uh, confusion, shall we say, about where long term is.
And one other point I want to make out, uh, uh, make is that you, you, you mentioned EFC, that's the Environmental Service Corps, so the orange is. Uh, for the most part, those are, um, uh, funds that were borrowed for, for rich, um, water and sewer. The town took all of them, so, so we still have outstanding debt related to that.
Hmm.
But it's, it'll start dropping off, um, twenty forty. Um, but at the time, that's what the town, that's the duty, get the word planned, sort of.
Right, and, and the EFC program, um.
And those.
Subsidy.
Yeah.
Have, offers, um, this, for this particular project, offered, uh, interest rate subsidy fifty percent, I believe it is. Um, and so the cost for that, uh, was certainly very attractive for the town. And they refinanced it, uh, once, so it brought the net cost.
Twenty.
In twenty twenty, when interest rates were particularly low in twenty twenty, they refinanced that. Uh, EFC, which brought your debt service, uh, down, your net debt service down even a little low. So it's certainly an attractive, uh, financing in that perspective.
Yeah, at that point in time, it was something I needed to, to be done, to, to take for me, me, up raise required. Um, there, hopefully we won't see that in your going forward. Okay, I'll go to the next one.
So this just gives you a breakdown and shows you the individual issues, um. Debt service related and you can see the little, uh, a little different picture of how they fall off.
Is there any real difference between what the interest rate would be between general obligation debt and water and sewer?
No, because in this case, um, the water and sewer debt is issued as a general obligation bond, which is. Very standard, that's the way to do it, we just thought it would be helpful for your purposes to break them out. So you can see, um, uh, what's being paid directly with water and sewer fees. Versus your general obligation, the other pieces of your general obligation bond are generally covered with property taxes. The EFC bonds, so the, the EFC bonds are the majority of those water and sewer, um. They are also, of course, GEO, and then there's a couple of smaller projects that were in the twenty four bond issue. So you'll see that that, the principle of the twenty four bonds doesn't. You look at the official statement, it doesn't add up because part of what's in that, we worked out, put in waters.
So the bond market effectively, for underwriting purposes, looks at those type of debts, pretty much.
Because you've issued them as general obligation, yeah.
Yeah, and mostly going forward, um, you know, there's been a lot of money put into like clean water, drinking water. Uh, funds that the state manages through the EFC, uh, so I think we'll, um, be in a position where we can. Take advantage of those grants.
Yeah, they have WEA grants every year.
Which we have, yeah, we were pretty successful getting those, yeah.
Um, you know, EFC, uh, clean water and drinking water programs. Uh, are dependent not only on the type of, um, project that you're doing, but also there's a. Spore in methodology determining whether you're eligible, uh, they have various programs, market rate programs. Uh, subsidized programs, where in this particular case, you have fifty percent subsidy on the interest rate because the project is deemed. So important, typically a wealthy community, quite, at least such as New Spur, does not, um. Does not get subsidies unless that project is really considered, um, correct.
Okay. Next.
Uh, this is a graph, we were asked to, um. Provide some projections related to, uh, an additional six hundred thousand dollars of authorization. To fund, uh, for that house project, so we came up with some projections, um, the issue grew. Twenty forty for the six hundred thousand, just to show you how that adding that particular amount of debt. If you so choose to issue debts for that project would look, um, compared to your outstanding debt.
So that's this column here, so that's the additional debt service.
That's right, for six hundred thousand dollars, um, it would, uh, at our projected rates. Can you scroll down a little bit, I wonder if you have the tick in there, no, we don't, it's probably around three forty, I believe.
Three sixty six.
Three sixty six, so we've projected, and what we do, by the way, when we come up with projected interest rates for your debt. What we do is we look at current market conditions for double A rated credits, what the most, what the sale was, you know, um. They're called MND, Municipal Market Data, every single day we can see what. GEO rates for double A rated credits are sold at, we take that information, we add a cushion. To allow for a little market movement and to try to be conservative, because again, we don't know what rates are going to be tomorrow. Um, so in producing this schedule, uh, this projection. Uh, a fifteen year deal, we took recent double A rates and average is small. And we're looking at a true interest cost projected, uh, of about three, did you say three sixty two, three sixty? So that would result in, uh, annual debt service. You know, averaging fifty two thousand dollars a year for fifteen years total, um. Principal and interest about seven ninety is the current projection.
Right. So if we decided to use, uh, our fund balance, um, towards this. You would be a part of that, that service, obviously.
That's right. We would save that, meaning, the interest rate goes if we use so many bands.
Right over the life, you look at the total with seven ninety, so you can say one hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
And in general, in a situation like that, the credit rating agencies look at us and. See what our decision process looks like, so in this particular case, if our fund balance is such that. You know, even, even using it for this purpose still leaves us in a very strong position. It would make sense to do this, if there's no, we don't have any other place to put that money and get this kind of guarantee. Rate, so it would make sense, is that the way they would look at it?
Again, they look at, uh, they will look at the town and the whole district, you know, look at, you know, if you're not issuing debt and losing fund balance. Or if you're issuing debt and looking, but, you know, the levers kind of go this way and that, um. But you are likely in a scenario, based on what I believe are the budget versus actually it's been twenty four. Where you, you probably have some cushion, can use some fund balance if you so choose, and, um.
I guess unless you were to say, we anticipate having some capital expense to this in twenty twenty six. Or something, and then we're saving it for that, we're getting interest rates to go up.
Uh, I mean, there's certainly a number of ways you could look at it, you could say to yourself, well, you know, I could leave the money in the bank. And if I'm earning more on, on investments versus what I'm paying debt service. Then maybe it makes sense to leave it in the bank and incur the debt, however. You don't know where interest rates are going to be next year, whether you're there or after, if you're looking at the track of right now. Perhaps we lock it in, um. But again, you know, if you're, if we. You could decide, you have other decisions to make, you could issue bands versus bonds. Um, and that could give you the opportunity to review every year, well, maybe we have some excess this year, so we'll rely some. Maybe, well, arbitrage it for a little, keep some money, but there are a number of options or ways that we could view it. All valid ways of decision, yes, my question, I imagine.
Um, I've got, I guess, a fund balance, just general question, fund balance one oh one, I guess, so we, we were, I was talking to Annie about that. So at the end of last year, uh, we thought we were at certain levels as far as fund balance, and then always taught it for twenty. Complaining for twenty three, we're, I think we're six, six, six point five million.
The unassigned fund balance for twenty twenty three in the audited financials is over six million.
So we were, yeah, so we're at that, I mean, preliminarily, and, and it's from when we spoke, maybe even. We know more so that based upon revenues, which we've kind of gone over, it should be, I guess, a little bit more than, than that, based upon the audited.
There's been a consistent trend of adding to the fund balance over the past few years, so.
So with that, by way of intro, having been in the town a long time, and, you know, talking about fund balance, what it's been historically. Um, what is considered healthy fund balance? Is there such thing as too much fund balance, has that changed over time, is there a formula getting there, if you tell us a little about that? Because it's, it's kind of in a.
Now, it's very good question.
And, and without context as far as, it's just a number.
And will it impact our rating if we. Go astray, since.
Um, um. So fund balance is your rainy day fund, of course, and so it's, it's certainly a good idea to maintain. Reserves, um, typically for events, I mean, certainly no one could have predicted COVID. Um, global shutdown, the rating agencies certainly want to see you keep. A healthy reserve level and we're going to continue the rating, I can tell you that, um, in New York. The double A rated municipalities, the median fund balance. Which is that unassigned fund balance in your, um, audited financial statements. Relative to your revenues is forty three percent for your cohort. Um, to me, it's somewhere higher, some are a little lower. Um, the town has in excess, the last audit, I believe, was in excess of fifty percent, so you certainly have some potential room.
Uh, how can you do that? Based, so we have a six point five in our revenue, was more, it was like eight.
Well, that was the annual revenue for one year.
That they're looking at total general fund revenues, which includes your property tax, so your, your total revenues last year were over eleven.
Yeah, state controller, they, they have like a minimum minus like fifteen cents.
Well, that's, yeah, that's kind of what I'm moving into, like this.
Find that, um, towns will. Adopt normal fund balance policies, and frankly, the rating agencies like to see that. Um, it gives them some comfort, even though it's not binding, it's policy. That when administrations change, the likelihood that you'll maintain those policies is stronger. Um, oftentimes municipalities will adopt fund balance, uh, policies somewhere in the. Fifteen, one, ten, fifteen, twenty percent minimum, um. But when you're looking at a rating agency perspective and how they're grading you in terms of credit strength. The median for double A credits in New York is over forty percent.
Right.
And the other interesting thing I'll, I'll say to you is, you know, those medians, you might think that. Um, you might find that the, the single A credits actually have more fund balance, why is that? Uh, it's because their wealth indicators are lower, and so they have less flexibility to raise revenues. Property taxes, and so they tend to carry more fund balance, and it seems like. Mike and Cameron too, you might see, you look at some medians, that a, a single A credit is carrying more fund balance than a double A credit. Because you have higher wealth than money, but nevertheless, it's still fairly high. Relative to a fifteen percent of OSC, um, recommended.
So, um, what I'm hearing is we're, we're better than median.
Yeah.
So.
And that, on that particular message, yeah.
So, are there any, like, Dan was talking about, is this, historically, does the state controller or any other. Uh, governmental entity making the recommendation or the kind of guidelines as to what should be or. Or isn't.
Well, they, you know, they will, you know, they will suggest, you know, they put out things regarding fifty, a fifteen percent number. Um, but it's solely from an operational perspective, and, and kind of a uniform operational perspective. It's not from a, what will get you a double A plus credit rating.
It's because there are different, to get that double A plus, you've got not just the fund balance, but you've got those other variables. As well, it's just one metric, one.
No, I understand that, I guess, no, I'm searching if, if there's an answer to the question, there may not be, if there's a certain target or a certain level. But, but having been in town, like state control and all this kind of, you have too much surplus, you know, enough surplus, we were building the surplus over. Period of time and we continue to do so, so the question is, you know, especially times, whether it's. I guess everything's a factor, increased, you know, higher interest now, and everything else based upon all the other factors. Is there a place we shouldn't be at, or you're recommending we should be at? Or I guess maybe is it impacts underwriting criteria for go to bond or, um, to the bath house or something else, or the largest.
You know, I, I would suggest, again, given the importance of the rating on your. Uh, debt service and on your access to markets, I would encourage you to maintain fund balances. That would, um, that would give you. That would keep you at, at least close to that median.
So fifteen percent is kind of like, uh, if you're running a company, you want to run clean, you use all your. You know, capital, you know, and, and, but, we, we're not, we don't operate like that, that's just, this is a safety margin for us.
This is the. That's fine.
So this one, again, we, we just tried to give you a little perspective, um, various scenarios. So this one, again, we just tried to give you a little perspective, um, various scenarios, give a sense of how um, different dollar amounts, different, um, maturity terms might impact debt service and how that might look relative to your outstanding debt service. And again, there's no particular basis here, other than what does a two million dollar project for fifteen years uh, look like in terms of projection? What if we, what if we took a four million dollar project and threw it out there for thirty years, what does that debt service look like? Over time? Just to give you orders of magnitude in the sense of of what that might cost and what it might look relative to your existing uh, debt service, how that might feel. And a- again, the the blue continues to be the geo-debt, it's non-water and sewer. Uh, orange is the geo-debt, it is water and sewer, paid for by user fees. The green is, uh, what a two million dollar looks like relative to outstanding, and it leaves the
Lower was four million dollars.
Four million dollars is on the bottom, the bottom screen, uh, that one as well.
Yeah, so as we talk about potential, um, investments in the future, this is just to give the pictures to what that that service looks like for a year.
And this is based on that, did you say this, the three point six percent?
So we, the the two million is fifteen years, so I think that's three point six, the thirty years is four.
Four, about four forty.
Four forty. And this is just look at that.
Yeah, basically.
The details of the projection, principal versus interest, how we came up with the tick. But true interest cost, thank you. These are issued in serial bonds, so every single year has its own interest rate. The the tick is a present value calculation of each serial bond interest rate.
Okay. Any other questions for CMA, Jack, or? Very helpful. Yeah, no, this was very, very, very good, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Yeah. So next we have, uh, Yuyan, is she still with us?
I'm still here.
Yeah, great. But Yuen has a, she's going to talk to us about, uh, bonds and borrowing and the process, and so let me just get her. And and it's a pretty quick presentation that she sent me, so just.
Those sort of slides. But that's your highlighted.
Oh, here it is. So. Okay, so thank you very much, uh, Yuen, for, um, joining us tonight, uh, so I'll let you go ahead and so Yuen is, you know, she's our bond counsel and helps us with all the bond resolutions that uh, we work on whenever there is any, um, requirement for for borrowing. So I'll let you take it away.
Yeah, hi, everyone, thank you for having me here today, um, I'm Yuyan Po, and I'm an attorney and a partner at Norton Rose Fulbright. Just going to give you a brief overview of my, um, myself and my firm. My law firm has a long history with the town, we've served as bond counsel to the town for over twenty years. And I personally have been working with the town for the last fourteen years. Um, I represent a variety of municipalities and, uh, public entities across the state, including some of the largest and some of the smallest entities, um, and I'm here to give you a brief overview of the borrowing process, uh, Janet did a great job going over some of these concepts, so I'll just briefly touch upon them, you know, she talked about the different types of debt that town typically issues, including, um, bands and bonds. Um, I'll also touch upon what a bond resolution normally authorizes, which is, you know, the first step in the borrowing process. Um, and lastly, I'll go kind of brief overview of the sale and issuance process. So under the local finance law, the town can either borrow on a short term or a long term basis. So bond anticipation notes, um, or bands, as we call them, as Janet mentioned, are typically issued for one year or less, uh, for capital purposes, and then they get renewed annually, um, at which time you can decide to either convert them to long term bonds, or you can stay in bands for, uh, the five year period. Typically, um, as Janet mentioned, that the rates for bands are a lot lower than long term bonds, therefore, it's kind of useful, a useful tool if you're trying to, you know, figure out what the project cost is going to be, or if you're waiting for reimbursement from our grant. And then we have, uh, long term bonds, which you typically would issue to redeem bands, uh, you can use bonds to refinance outstanding debt, uh, outstanding bonds, or to provide new money to pay the cost of the project, so some issuers, uh, when it's a low interest rate environment, they can choose to just go and straight, you know, directly go into bonds instead of staying, uh, going first with bands and then switching to bonds. So I mean, I think one way to give you an example of how it generally works is, you know, say you want to build a pickleball court at the town park. Under the local finance law, um, parks and recreational area improvements to them generally are entitled to a statutory period of probable usefulness of about fifteen years. So first step is, you know, issuing, uh, is adopting a bond resolution. And in that bond resolution, I'm sorry, you can go to the next slide. So in that bond resolution, you would be authorizing, say, you're not sure about the project cost yet. You're going to estimate that the cost is about two hundred thousand dollars. Um, so you would authorize about bond resolution for two hundred thousand dollars, give a general description of the project, uh, so you'd say, authorizing two hundred thousand dollars for the, uh, I guess, improvement to a park, which is more general, uh, description, or you can go very specific, and this really depends on different types of boards prefer to have more specific resolutions versus general resolutions. Um, so you know, if, an example of a very specific resolution would be, you know, you're authorizing pickleball courts, you know, construction at a specific park. Um, and there are pros and cons to the different approaches. Uh, you know, one of which is, if you go very specific, then you're kind of stuck with issuing debt for just that very specific project. If you go with a more general description, say, like just improvements to parks, then that gives you a little more flexibility, um, later on, if you're, you decide to, you know, not do pickleball courts at a specific park, instead you want to have tennis courts, um, because that's the new trend instead of pickleball courts. So different ways of, um, drafting the bond resolution can have an impact on the type of barn that you do. The bond resolution also, you know, you know, we talked about the pro- period of probable usefulness, that's discussed within the bond resolution. Um, in addition, the bond resolution can also limit the, uh, the life of the bonds, so you can have an effective immediately bond resolution with a maximum life of five years or less. Or if the bond resolution authorizes a period of probable usefulness of over five years, um, then it would be subject to permissive referendum. So again, there are like different approaches when we drop the bond resolutions, um, and trying to align them to the goals of the, you know, the town board. Another thing that the bond resolution authorizes is that it states the estimated maximum cost of the project and the plan of finance. Um, the estimated maximum cost of the project can change over time, so if it does change over time, and you need to authorize additional bonds, you can always amend the the bond resolution later on. I guess one, some things I want to note about bond resolutions is that it just authorizes the sale and issuance of the bonds, but it doesn't lock the town board into pursuing a specific project necessarily. Um, if you issue the, you know, if you adopt the bond resolution, but then later on change your mind about the project, and you haven't issued the debt yet, then, um, you can just, you know, not use the bond resolution essentially. Um, the bond resolution authorizes a maximum amount that can be borrowed, but you can always borrow less. In addition, the plan of financing may change over time, if you, you know, pursue grants or other, um, or you have, you know, available funds, such as fund balance that you want to use. The plan of financing doesn't, isn't locked in at the time of the bond resolution adoption, so there's still flexibility there. The next slide is, talks about the bond resolution process, and I'm not going to go through the details here, because this is very
Yeah.
Easel minutia.
Yeah.
But I just want to note that, as I explained, there are different types of bond resolutions, some of which are effective immediately, some of which are subject to permissive referendum, meaning that after you adopt the bond resolution, it's actually not effective right away, you have to wait thirty days after, um, you know, first you would publish a notice of adoption to let the public know that there, uh, you know, that you've adopted this bond resolution. And then it allows the public time to file a petition with the town clerk if they for some reason, um, would like to have a referendum on the, on the resolution. Then there's a special bond resolution for district improvements that follows a completely different process, um, which includes a public hearing. So I'm not going to go into the details, but I just want to let everybody know that there are different types of bond resolutions, and they have a different process for each of them. Okay, the next slide. So briefly, I'll just touch upon the issuance and sale process. The first, um, after the bond resolution is effective, then the financial advisor is going to work with the town to determine a schedule for the sale and issuance of the bonds or notes. Um, and then there's a preparation of the preliminary official statement and the notice of sale. Afterwards, the sales date is set, and usually, you know, there's a submission of bids by the purchasers pursuant to the notice of sale. Once the, um, sale, you know, the winning bidder is confirmed, usually, you know, it's the bidder who has the, um, the lowest net interest cost for bands or for bonds, it's the the lowest true interest cost. Um, and then there's a preparation of the final official statement, which contains the final pricing information for the bonds and bands. Um, and then at that point, we'll, you know, as bond counsel, we'll help with the preparation of the closing documents, including the tax documents, and ask for the execution of such documents by the supervisor and the town clerk. And then at the closing date, the funds are transferred to the town, and if it's a book entry only closing, then we do a formal closing with DTC, which is the depository trust company. I just wanted to note one thing, um, there's a lot of talk right now at the federal level about doing away with the tax exemption status of bonds. Um, I just wanted to, you know, bring that up to the town board, just to let you know that 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 is out there. That's on a table at the federal level. Um, I think it's highly unlikely that they're going to get rid of tax exemption for local municipalities, because that would just have a very, that would have a that would really have an interesting effect on the bond market and would cause, I think, I think there's bipartisan support for for not doing away with tax exemption at the local level, but, um, you just never know these days at the federal level what's going to happen, so, just wanted to let you know.
Thanks, Yuen, and I did not know that.
Well, yeah.
Um, yeah, just so an example of one of the, the last resolution, bond resolution that you helped us with was the one for the potential sewer district, there was a forty million dollar uh, bond resolution, which again, it's, as you had stated, it's not a commitment that we're going to borrow that much money. Um, but if we did need to borrow, we had that resolution in place, but what it did was it helped us with the grants that were awarded for that, uh, project, if it ever gets off the ground. Um, so, yeah, so that's another benefit of bond resolutions. But thank you very much, Yuen, for uh, participating with us, and we've been waiting an hour, so.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, great, so a- any other questions, um, from the board? I forgot to introduce, that's our attorney, the guy who's very quiet.
There's some gasps.
So, okay, any other questions or?
That's great.
Yeah.
Thanks, so awesome.
Yeah, thank you, guys, let's stand together.
Happy to be here.
Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate it very much.
Yeah, and we'll, uh, we'll be in touch.
Yes.
Yeah, be sure for any other questions.
If only they wanted to stay for the years. Um, but thank you very much for for coming out.
Everybody's still awake.
Okay.
They're all good, taking notes.
Back us to everybody.
Thank you, yes.
To keep our some.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so. Okay, so then we'll, uh, so that was our our session, folks, so. Um, we're now going to start the, uh, the regular town board meeting, and we'll start with the public hearing on the proposed zoning amendments. Um, and these are, uh, chapter seven, chapter one ninety one, chapter one ninety five, chapter two seventeen, and chapter two twenty. Uh, actually, let me stop my screen share here, we don't need this anymore. Um, so, yeah, so we'll go ahead and, um, and and start with the, uh, the public, public hearing, so, um, if anyone here would like to say anything?
Oh, make a motion over. As continued from.
Oh, okay, one second. So, so I I I motion to over the public hearing as continued from the prior public hearing. Second, discussion, all in favor? Okay, now we can, a- anyone wants to say anything?
We're going to do one chapter at a time?
So just, no. Yeah. Anybody else?
On any of these.
On any of these chapters?
The, and the chapters, just, um, the first relates to, uh, the, what's known as ATARC, the Architecture and Community Appearance Review Council. Uh, the second rev, uh, involves a small section of the town code involving, uh, street and sidewalks. Um, there is a modest modification to the, uh, town subdivision regulations, that's chapter one ninety five. Some amendments to the wetlands, local law, uh, chapter two seventeen, and then the zoning code, chapter two.
And the chapter two twenty does not include the excavation of the steep.
Yeah, so the, what has been provided to the board, a couple of things, when when the town board embarked, first of all, the town board adopted the comprehensive plan last year, and when you embarked on the process of local laws to put in effect um, the objectives. Um, the objectives of, of the comprehensive plan, th- there were a number of local laws that were prepared. Though, those have been pared down or parts of them have been pulled out, so there's two local laws that had been. Subjected and open to public review that we aren't, are not up for consideration tonight. The first is the steep slopes, there was gonna be a separate steep slopes protection chapter that. Has been parked and, you know, if in the future you. Want to address those regulations, likely they'll go into chapter two twenty. Okay, and then the excavation and fill, also, just because it, it requires a little more review, that's been s- set aside for now.
They're stuck in committee right?
Okay, so any, anyone on Zoom for the public hearing?
No.
You might wanna answer the people here.
But I'll ask again, anybody here? Give you a chance, no. Um, there was that one item that we talked about in chapter twenty?
With the buildable, yeah.
With the buildable.
And I, so a question was raised about. And the board will recall, we had a fair amount of discussion on the, um. Provisions of chapter two twenty that deal with an accessory dwelling on a, on a property. And trying to figure out how big a property should be, uh, if it's going to accommodate an accessory dwelling. So the language that came up that we ultimately, basically with the board, where the, where the board landed from a. You know, a policy and a legislative standpoint was that you should have at least two times. At least double the size of a lot if you're gonna have an accessory dwelling on, on the same lot. And.
So in other words, it's basically you're satisfying the zone requirements without some dividing sense.
In, in a sense, right, so what, the, 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 the way this has been drafted is. It's, uh, proposed section two twenty forty point one. And it is subsection A, minimum lot area, and it reads, a minimum lot area two. Yeah, ninety-five, yeah. And I apologize, I am not as technically proficient as my colleague Christian, yeah, I. Yeah, ninety-five, Andrew, yeah.
You can control.
I'm gonna put it up on screen, so can you give me a second here?
Well, we didn't forget our roosters. Roosters still paying by our company, I believe.
Rooster champion.
This is that, what about pre-existing? Accessory dwellings that already exist but don't conform to this, this.
Well, I mean, I can't speak to every instance, but it, but, but if they, if they're there, I think they would be treated as a pre-existing non-conforming use.
What, what page are we sitting on?
Hey, just don't pass it. It's right before the, this is the wireless stuff, oh, yeah.
It's past this or the, no, it's before, this is a.
It's, it's before, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, 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 yeah.
I don't think he saw the eruption you were seeing.
Yeah, it's like.
And there's no minimum size of the accessory part, as to keeping the ratio, it's fifty percent of the lot, but.
There is, there is a limit on the.
Max, yeah, max, I'm talking about minimum, minimum.
Fifteen hundred square feet.
So, here's, here's the, it's section A.
Yes, so the way it's drafted is minimum lot area of two times. The requirement for an individual lot in the zoning district in which the accessory residence dwelling is to be located shall be required. For the accessory residence dwelling and subject to the provisions herein. I, and a suggestion has been made that that should be, um, the, the minimum buildable lot area. If you look at the code, section two twenty ten, building lots refers to what is a lot and. The concept of buildable lot area, I think this language covers that, because it says, I, I, I don't think we need any. Additional sort of tinkering with this language, because it says two times the requirement for an individual lot, and I think that picks up. Yeah, it would pick up buildable.
Covered in, in B then, as well?
Yeah, that's, it's just, yeah, I think it all, it, it, it's all of a, of a, of a piece, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I mean, I just wanna make sure it was clear, because, you know, when I.
Right, right, yeah, I think I.
Or is it the buildable area of that lot?
Well, it would, it would be.
It needs to be.
It would be.
Second, one person at a time, please.
We need to be in layman's terms.
It, it would be basically, can, if I have, I, I have the two times, I can get the two times, but it still has to create what would be a, 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 you know, a two. Lots, it, it's basically, can the land be subdivided?
Okay.
Yeah.
So if it's a, so if it's four acre zoning, it doesn't mean that you need eight acres.
You might need a little more, i- i- given the, the, the makeup of the buildable area, yeah. To create a, to create a building lot.
Right.
Yeah. Uh, uh, to create, I'll put it this way, to create a lot. That meets the requirements, right?
Uh huh.
Uh, of the district and also lot year, yard and bulk requirements.
Right.
So I just, I double that, because B doesn't mean the existing lot, it does mean. The, the resulting two lots.
Lots, the resulting two lots.
Yeah, even if you're not subdivided, it has to, the, each lot would have to make a. If that's clear enough, yeah, I think.
Which is what I mean. By saying buildable, because that's the resulting.
Yeah, right, right.
Septic or.
Right, right.
Build the separation distance.
Just to be clear to everybody who's watching or listening, accessory. Residence dwelling is different from accessory unit. That we.
Right.
Passed a local law on over a garage, an in-law to me, something like that, that's. Different than an actual, it's just.
Freestanding, I guess.
And we've also created a mechanism so that can't be cumulative, so I can't have. I can't have an accessory dwelling and an accessory unit. You know, you, you can't have both one on top of the other on top of.
Not building a common.
Right, right. Okay, so I think we're, we're okay.
Yeah, okay, yes, yes.
So, um. So now we have, in order to adopt, we have to add the two resolutions, one is the, um.
So I, I've drafted a single resolution for the board.
We still have to close the public hearing, correct.
Right, but we still, I, I look, I know I'm bringing up roosters, people that come raising, but we're still in there, and we talked about it, there are people who live in our town that live. On a nice sized piece of property and they wanna raise chickens, and by preventing roosters altogether, you're preventing their right. To have and grow their own chickens, so to speak, so I have a problem with it. Um, and, and I think that we need to not ban it, but we need to come up with something that better addresses that particular issue, and I know. Roosters are necessarily fun for the neighbors, but you're also cutting off somebody else's rights and I wouldn't come with that. We discussed it last time, but we didn't, we didn't resolve it, it's still in there, I checked.
Was somebody supposed to, someone take that as an action item to resolve, I don't recall.
Did we?
Um, I, I wasted like a half an hour of our time talking about birds, like. I assumed that that meant that we were gonna do something about it.
It wasn't a waste of time.
No, well, no, I shouldn't, it was, it was a significant amount of time talking about roosters. And people's right to farm and the fact that they have the right to raise animals, and there are people who have chickens that want to. Raise it on chickens, and by saying roosters are completely banned from the town of Blue's Borough. To me is a problem, I understand neighbors don't like it, neighbors don't like anything that their neighbors do that make noise, that interfere with their. Quiet enjoyment of their property, I understand that, so I think that we need to come up with some sort of resolution. That addresses that, because you're taking away rights of people who live in town.
Did we talk, did we talk about like, uh, some property size over which we would?
Right, there was, there was a discussion about, about, uh. Chicken coops and how far from the property line it could be, and take, but we didn't resolve anything, we didn't come, we didn't draw any conclusions from our conversation, we were just kind of spitballing ideas. And I thought we were gonna come back and have some suggestions.
I have to admit that I, we had roosters at one time, and we did have neighbors complain, and we did have to come. Here to the, to the townhouse, at one point, that was, that was many years ago, but. So, we know you're worth the issue from that.
So then if. Dogs bark, you know, and you bark every morning.
I'm not comfortable with, with banning, and yet I was not happy to be walking up by them, and I, and we held them on, so.
Excuse my total ignorance of this, but if you're in an ag district. I, aren't there different rules that apply, like, could you have roosters?
Well, I think that it is not the way we have it currently set up, that roosters are not allowed. Like at all, even within an ag district.
Well, it talks about inside, I don't know, it talks about having that inside a residential district and then having that. Um, in farming area, so. You know, perhaps what I'm trying to say, maybe there's a way to make exemptions for people who are really doing.
Agricultural.
Agricultural activities, um. I, but I don't know that, I don't know enough about agricultural history.
Same to you, I, that's not my area of expertise either, I don't know what's allowed anyways. I don't know, no.
I mean, the only thing that's in the minutes, that I just mentioned, that the keeping of roosters prohibited.
Yeah, then wouldn't that, wouldn't that address if you had some kind of special permit, threshold, the process?
Like a minimum number of acres?
Well, it'd give neighbors an opportunity to speak.
Don't you realize roosters do move around, won't stay necessarily in one location? I got followed by a. Very interesting rooster the other day, one of his, he was in a farm, he was living alone, so they moved around, so even if you say minimum acres, you have to stop the rooster. From visiting neighbors.
But as Greg said, maybe a special permit, and then you have a special permit that, you know, removes after two years, or if it's been. We've, we've known, uh, if the neighbors have a chance to come in and say, this is just a miracle, and maybe there's a decision, but you would have to set up. I mean, this would be, you'd have to set up criteria by which you would examine the special permit issues.
Whereas they have to come and pay a fee. To get a special permit, right?
It's, it's tied into the noise ordinance.
Now, charging people to, to, for their, right now, they have the right to have roosters and chickens, so now we're saying, well, you know, we don't want you to have roosters, so if you really want roosters, you're gonna have to. Come and make an application and pay another fee. To have roosters, people don't need to pay a fee when they have a cow. Or a horse, they don't have to, you know, just because it happens to be an animal that makes a noise, we're creating this whole. Process, you, you wanna say minimum acres, I just, I don't wanna cost. I, I don't want people to have to spend more money because they want roosters, I just, I think that a, a, ban, and I did this last time, is just the wrong way to go.
So what, what would you recommend, because you don't want roosters?
If somebody has, so how do you deal with somebody has a dog that's barking incessantly next to somebody? And they have a noise ordinance, so how, I mean, that's.
It's the same thing.
That's how we treat it today.
Noisy rooster, noisy rooster, leave it alone. Take it out, I, and I, I don't think it belongs in there, you cannot ban roosters on the town of Blue's Borough, I think that's absolutely absurd.
So, all right, so if we take it out, what does that do, Greg, in terms of that? Instead of.
Yeah, we're gonna have to, I, I think we're gonna have to bring it back, yeah, yeah.
Keep it open.
Yeah, well, I, I think we can close the public hearing. And, and I can, and I, and I think we can close the public hearing and. We can, we can take care, it's, it's two changes, uh, pages thirty-seven, page forty-one.
And I'm gonna be sorry, you know, my neighbor's gonna go out and buy three roosters next week, and I'm gonna, but I just, I can't.
So, no, um, and, and then the public hearing will be closed and. Resolutions drafted, it would just be a, a, a matter of putting it on the agenda next month and, and adopting or enacting. Posting a revised version on the, on the website. Yeah, and we have a revised version on the website, yeah, I, I mean, I just prefer to, as, if we're gonna do this, to get it as clean as possible.
What about if we, I mean, right now it says, uh, uh, it says keeping roosters is sort of, nevermind. Yeah, all right. Okay.
Okay, so. Yeah, so we.
That little bit of drafting, all right, we, did we close the public hearing? Yeah, I think the motion you gotta say.
Yeah, I, I made the motion, but it gets.
Public hearing.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
So now we need to motion to.
No, um, I'll have a resolution prepared for April fourteenth, is that your next, yes, okay. I'll get this back, okay, good, okay. Yeah, thank you.
I think that's what we're interested in, yeah.
You know, I'm going up to Manchester, you know, I'm gonna be here.
Very quickly, before I, with town board members, um. I will, I will give you a preview for, so the resolution, it's gonna be a single resolution.
Like the one you gave.
Like the one I provided today, which will do a, a couple of things, one, it'll, it'll, the, the neg deck will be issued, right? And then the local laws will be enacted, um, one piece with the neg deck is, I just wanna make sure everybody.
Is that the other thing you talked about?
Looked through it, yeah, I saw it.
Yeah.
You know, it's like the big words.
Also in the table, the end mentions, uh, New York State Village.
I'm doing, okay, all right. I'll let this turn up, yeah, okay.
I have a question, I'm not going to be here on the fourteenth of April, or, or, sorry. So, is it? Do you have no resolution for me to vote? Um, electronically?
No.
So we never pass that.
Right, I, I, I think it sounds like.
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, it'll, it'll require a majority vote of the board.
Majority vote of the board that, that's present.
Yeah, that's present, yeah.
I, I wanted to stay on the fourteenth, but, but. If, when Mary reviews it before that meeting, if she has some strong, strong objection. That she really, really wants to be here, I have no problem then post twenty eighth, twenty eighth, for her to voice publicly what her issues are with the new version.
Why, why not set up a, maybe a special meeting on the Monday?
Because there's, there's no urgent time issue, why don't we just have it the twenty-eighth, we'll get it done then?
What? Twenty-eight, okay, all right.
I don't go to Pittsburgh until the twenty-ninth.
Just okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
Medical elaborate sensation. I have no.
There you go.
Scanning up the lights and moving those, I don't know. Thank you, Jenna. Thank you.
Okay, next we have public hearing for the building permit term, so. Okay, next we have public hearing for the building permit terms. So I'd like to go ahead and motion people in the public hearing for. The building permit terms.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? And this, just uh to share with everyone, this is um what we've done with the last uh. With the building department fees, uh we changed also the um. Uh, the expiration of a building permit to thirty six months, the expiration, expiration period after the date of issuance.
From one year.
From one year to thirty six months, correct? Uh, so this, uh, we have second, all in favor? Okay, anyone, anyone here like to speak? Ladies of the public hearing on building permits? No, how about on Zoom?
Can I just ask one question?
On the building permit? It's not, it's not, and we can't answer questions, like the plea is just a statement that you're gonna make, okay?
Alright, so if the building permit uh is issued for thirty six months from the.
Excuse me, name and how.
Okay, Abbas Nusa from the Golden's Bridge Colonies. So, if the building permit has been issued to a company or to a contractor for thirty six months. Do you have any requirements for the contractor to finish the work or to propose some sort of plan? Not just someone just comes and pulls the permit next to, to me, for example, or next to anyone and just like drags the project for no reason.
Well, they, so they have thirty six months to complete the project.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Do you wanna discuss it during?
Well, okay, so I, I, I'm going against what I just.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, does the board wanna entertain that?
The, the reason why I'm asking you this is, sorry. That, you know, should, should, should be the size of the project that you should allow the contractor to pull the permit for thirty six months. And not, for example, to build a garage or some sort of small project and they come and they drag the project for thirty six months because they know that they won't pay any fees. And then they disturb the neighbors by just like having the project open.
Right.
That is my comment, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, yeah. Sorry, guys.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else?
There was, um. I'm Carol Sernak, I know you're very loud. I'm, I'm asking you to unmute. Carol Sernak.
Hi, this is Carol. Carol Sernak at Farby Commons. Can you hear me?
Yes. And now, no. Can you hear me, Carol?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, there you are. We hear you now.
Okay. So I would just like to speak to the um, the rooster.
Actually, this is the public hearing for the uh.
I don't care, but you're, you're talking about people who wanna raise their own chickens and. You know, if you have enough.
Uh, Carol, this is a public hearing for the building permits only. Um, so you can talk during the public comment period.
Anyone else for the public hearing?
Uh, no hands or face.
So, okay. So, motion to close the public hearing? Discussion, all in favor? So, motion to adopt.
Well, first you wanna make a type two, seek a determination that it's a type two. Action and then we can move to the doctor that's noticed.
Okay, so this is a type two seeker action. Um. With that, it's a motion that we adopt.
It's too much motion.
No, you're doing more motion. The motion is to make a determination that it's a type two seeker action and to adopt it as it's been notoriously published.
As stated by council.
Council.
Go second.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, uh, public comment, number one, anyone here would like to say anything about?
Right, your name is Malo.
Joy Redolovic, Golden's Bridge. I am one of the uh residents that lives in the colony right at the entrance on Pond. This is my neighbor here. There's a large contingent of us here because we were under the impression that you guys were voting. This evening to allocate some funds that we can get towards the engineering. At four forty eight, Tony, I believe, sent an email to both Jeremy, our president, the board. And Mary Mahoney saying that that vote might not take place tonight for some reason. There are some issues that need to be discussed. You do have the consent of the, the colony collectively. We did vote. We do want these entrances paved and. Four years is a long time to wait and. The health and safety of, of us specifically who live right there and breathe in this dust on a daily basis. And watch the vehicles speeding, racing. Any further delays and, and I mean, if somebody's gonna go on vacation and take a family holiday or whatever and then you don't vote. This is just going to continue to get kicked down the road. This can and it can't. So I do urge you, please vote tonight. We, we need to keep this moving in a forward direction. Really, no more delays. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Jeremy Metz, Golden's Bridge Hamlet, uh also to speak about the road paving of our three entrance roads. So we have been working with previous uh road committee, Tony, current roads folks. Uh, we worked for several years on this. Uh, we were asked to take a poll of our membership. We actually took almost a year. To take the time to discuss it and through several of our meetings, we had a vote that we had over eighty percent of our. Uh. Members voting and over eighty two percent voted in favor of paving the three entrances. Paving the roads is a controversial issue, but everybody practically agrees. In part as Joy, who lives uh on the first road, um, on street, over the last few years. Whether the nature of the material has changed, but certainly the nature of the cars driving on our roads have changed. They've gotten larger. We now have electric, Amazon trucks, other vehicles, much larger, much heavier, coming through on a daily basis. The dust is horrendous that this kicks up minute it gets a little bit dry. And so, since the three entrances, every, wherever you live, you have to come through those three entrances, especially. Pond Street and Lake Street seem to get the most, the first and the third, um, and those people have complained the most. Um, and we met with Tony a little while ago because when we saw that the engineering. Might not happen this year and now this is gonna get kicked off of and for another year or more. Who knows if there'll be funding available that year. Um, we worked with, you know. Roads, um, and Tony. They've walked our roads with us. They've said that there's funding available this year for these roads to be, the entrances to be paved. So, to repeat what Joy and a number of our neighbors are here to say, we ask that you do vote, improve, approve this today. So that we can get this done this year and not go through another year, another summer and then another winter of. The dust and the problems that it's creating. Thank you. I'm happy to ask, ask there any questions you may have.
Sure. Anyone else?
Carol Sernak, I'm asking you to unmute.
I don't have anything to ask about new business, so I'm good. Thanks.
Alright, thanks, Carol.
It's. Carol, doesn't she wanna talk about roosters? Yeah, I do, but that's not new business. Welcome your input. Okay, yeah, so if you wanna have chickens, usually the idea is that. You wanna raise your own chicks and raise your own hens. Um, and to, to do that, you need, I mean, you can have hens and not have. Uh, fertile babies, but if you wanna ra, if you wanna raise something to continue on your. Your line of your chickens, you need a rooster. And a rooster will go away at. Uh, dusk and will come back out at dawn, but if you, if you house him. With an insulated building, you know, little chicken coop, nobody's gonna hear you, rooster. So I'm not sure what. You're changing this whole community, trying to change this whole community from going from rural agricultural. Into living in a city environment and this is not what we are. And the other thing I have to say is that the building department's um new structuring fee. Continues to punish all of us who have paid our. Um, fines and our renewal fees and you're rewarding the people who have not done so. So I'm not sure. Where that goes. I mean, I'm not sure we raise our children that way. I'm not sure we educate our kids that way. I'm not sure this is how you want your kids to grow up to be adults. So I think you should reconsider that. Um, I appreciate your concern about missing fees, but you made it up. Big time by, for those of us who did the right thing and followed the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
And this.
Uh, Simone O'Connor, I'm asking you to unmute.
Hi, Simone. Um, I, I, I'm just trying to understand this colony paving proposal. Um, and where this colony is, it sounds like it's uh, uh, an area where there's a group of homes. Not unlike Oak Ridge and the continuing water issue for years and years and years. And Oak Ridge, uh, their water prices went up. They're responsible for their own. Um, payment plus a grant that allegedly has come in or is coming in. And I'm seeing that letter H is about this resolution for thirty thousand. Which I read and I think it's for engineering, not even for the paving. And I'm wondering who is paying for that? Is the colony paying for that? Are we all paying for that? Um, because it seems to me like Oak Ridge was segregated to pay for their own. Situation and now everyone is going to be asked to pay for this engineering. And not even the paving. And as much as I feel bad for this dust uh situation. I feel really bad for the people drinking uh water that is not good for them. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Simone. I know someone still, yes. Uh, Barbara Mangione, I'm asking you to unmute.
Can you hear me, Janet?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I just wanted to kind of go back to the um. Finance presentation and ask that our board be very careful in making. Financial decisions. Um, it was a nice presentation. I thi, I think we, I think they forgot to. Actually include some information that I was hoping the public could hear. Um, it, it was good to hear that. As far as finances go, we're in good shape, um, that the departments perform better than expected so that. You know, we, we had almost a one million dollars more than we were expecting. However, um, things are gonna get a little tougher in the future. And I still feel like we're just kind of spending um. A little too much money on things that may not be a priority and. We have to be careful at the last Parks and Rec Department meeting. Uh, Nicole Caviolo, the um, the department head. Did mention that the Lewisboro building was probably not gonna be available anymore. Um, probably as soon as August or September, uh, for Parks and Rec functions and programs. And by the end of the year for the town. So I think the main focus of this board should really, at this point, only be. What are we going to do with our departments? Um, we need to put together a, a plan. And, and make a decision now because the money supposedly is there. And it should be, everything right now should be focused on the infrastructure that we need to support all of these departments that are gonna be thrown out. And also to spend a little less because if Parks and Rec is kicked out of Lewisboro Elementary. You're going to lose a good chunk of revenue that they come up with because they do bring a lot of money in. Um, so, so I think you have to tighten your belts a little and, and really focus on what, what, what a major problem is right now. And that is where are all of our town employees going? Um, I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you, Barbara. That's it.
That's it, okay. Oh, alright, moving on. Oh, you have, I have a, okay, uh, Nathan Howard, please. John Berger. John Berger, Golden's Bridge.
Uh, in the colony. Uh, my neighbor handed me that he ought to speak to with himself, but let me hold on. Uh, I just wanna speak about roads and water because it came up with a speaker. And where this, who pays for what and how do things work and how come, why should we pay for their roads? Well, I mean, we have a highway department. The highway department takes care of everybody's roads. We also have a water system that's almost a hundred years old and we don't go to the town. And ask for money for our uh filtration systems. We don't ask for money for a hundred year old. Water mains. Uh, uh, we uh handle our water system. We're very proud of it. It costs us a fortune. Uh, it's actually. Costing people all over the country a fortune as these hundred year old water systems. Deteriorate and there hasn't been enough put aside to replace them. So, um. I think mixing people's water systems with highways. Is, uh, I don't know what it's called when somebody equates something that isn't people. But I mean, the, 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 the town has a highway uh department. We're looking for the highway department. To do the right thing that's necessary to have roads that function. And what I had here, which isn't here anymore and. Wouldn't be able to see it anyway, is what a mess the entrances are to our community. Especially Lake and Pond. Um, it's, you have all this traffic coming in. Uh, and although the dirt roads are dispersed throughout the community. Those three areas get tremendous amount of traffic that a dirt road can handle, was never meant to handle. And so I just wanted to speak, I, I didn't wanna speak actually, but equating water systems with the town's highway department. Doesn't make any sense to me. It shouldn't make any sense to you. And, and I just wanted to correct that comment that was made. Thank you very much.
Okay, um, moving on. Uh, next we have communications. So I have one, one piece here. This was a, a letter from. Uh, a town resident, Adam Rose, um. We gave you the okay to read this. Uh, he said, on behalf of Adam Rose, I am pleased to enclose a contribution of seventeen thousand dollars. To the town of Lewisboro to pledge with this pledge for the police shields program. Uh, this contribution should be noted in all written material as Adam R. Rose. Best wishes of carrying out your important work for the town. So attached to this letter is actually a, an invoice for, so what this is, is um, new badges for our police department. Including the um, the die that's used to manufacture uh the badges. Um, and I do have an invoice for a total of sixteen thousand, six hundred seventy dollars. The, the chief is here. Um, if the board has any questions, uh, I received the check um, last week on Thursday, Friday. Uh, so we have that money to spend on these new badges and the die cutting. Um, that is needed to create those engraved badges. Um, so it's not on the agenda, um, but we would like to move forward with uh. The purchasing um of these, using the monies that came in for these badges that the board will approve. And why not, maybe the chief, if you wanna.
We should put on as an item, not an item, right?
Yeah, we could, or we could. Yeah. If the board rather put it on to the next board meeting, that's fine.
No, just, just come right to the first item, it's fine, whatever you need. We're, we're in the middle.
So you, if you wanna tell us about the quotation that we received.
So the quotes were all new metal shields.
So the quotes were all new metal shields um from police officers all the way up to chief. Um, it's gonna be two badges each per officer. Um, where the price tag comes in is the actual molds. That they make for these new style badges and it's a better company of what we have. Um, it's right here, local, White Plains, Smith and Moore. But uh, it's the price tag is basically the mold for. Police officer, sergeant, lieutenant, and chief, it's four molds there, I believe they're like thirty five hundred dollars piece of molds. And thank you, Adam Rose. Uh, and Peter, for the generous donation.
It um, sounds like this kind of like investment here that future badges would also come out of these molds.
Absolutely, so a new hire, anything like that, usually a shield all by itself is. Hundred and twenty-five dollars, give or take.
Is there gonna be a change in the actual shield?
Um, not for my, um, a little bit on the blue dye, not much, um, but it's still same shape. Um, little better, just cleaned up a little bit and nicer looking. Um, and uh, it's really about it.
Yeah, okay.
Not much change though.
Right. So I'd like to motion that we utilize seventeen thousand dollars to purchase these shields. Discussion. All in favor? Hi, thanks chief.
Thank you.
So you're purchasing the shield as well, right? Purchasing from the vendor.
Okay, uh, Rich. Andrea. I'm an I.
Aye.
Mary Shaw, aye.
Thank you. Okay, next is the consent agenda, so I'd like to motion that we approve the minutes of March third and March tenth. Right, second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Okay, next is the pool bath house, um, so I like, you know, Nicole is here. She can maybe step onto the podium and. Think on the best of balances related to discuss.
I have one.
You have one? Yeah, yes, yes.
It's two pages?
No, it's, it's one page.
Oh, I guess.
Oh, wait a minute. Yeah, that, that's, that's. Okay, go ahead and go.
Okay, so Tony created this breakdown of all of the expenses towards the pool bath house. Um, and options of whether we should bond or use from fund balance. Um. I basically just wanted to say that we have discussed this multiple times at multiple meetings. And that I would like the board to move forward with this. So to decide whether we are going to bond the balance or pull from the fund. Um. You know, there are options to potentially fundraise some money, obtain some donations from Rings End, King Lumber. And potentially Fest Plumbing to bring down our costs, but we don't know. Until we start that exactly how much.
What, what is? So on the categories here, subdivision fees?
Yeah, so these are fees that um, as part of our fee structure with the planning board, there is uh, there are subdivision fees. You're in the planning boards, I don't know if you've ever had a situation where there was subdivision fees collected or charged. But these are fees that we have collected specifically for Parks and Rec. And it's in our code.
It's direct fees, it's under Alma two seventy-seven.
There you go.
You collect them or you take uh, they're in the fees or you collect land typically. Paid by.
Yeah, I don't remember this, I don't remember this term.
So so far, correct, and and there's uh, remaining eighty-three thousand to be collected.
Right.
Right.
So we're looking to. Even use fund balance or bond in the amount of sixty-fourteen thousand pounds dollars, is that? What's?
Now, that, that number may go down as Nicole said, based on donations and sponsors and. We're gonna work on that, um, but the other thing I like to point out is that we do have as part of that twenty twenty-four bond. There is six hundred thousand dollars already allocated to the bath house. Which if you recall from the conversation we had with the town council, once it's committed to that project, you have to use it to for that project. So we have six hundred thousand dollars that's sitting there. For the bath house.
So we've effectively bonded already six hundred thousand.
Correct.
So why is the question about whether we're bonding, Williams Bond or?
Well, the, so my, my.
We don't have to use it, we just passed the resolution, right? So that we could.
No, 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 the, for, for the six hundred thousand, that's already a done deal, that's a bond.
Okay.
Right, that's part of the bond. Correct. The next, yeah, the next, you know, that's how, how much we still need.
Bonded already for the first fifty percent, now we're talking about the second fifty percent.
So my, my, uh, and and I consulted with CMA, uh, with BT's fund balance for the remainder. Because then when we do get donations and 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 if there are any other projects, I understand it could be some. Changes in project like type of roof material, which would increase the cost. Um, but increase future maintenance down the road, uh, those, that's something that we can decide on uh, as well. And 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 we would have the flexibility to, you know, take those donations or the savings and that goes back into fund balance.
So what was that again, that CMA, what?
Capital Market Advisors.
Yeah, no, yeah.
I consulted with them.
Right, the, the people that were here?
Right.
Okay, yeah.
And what's, so what's your, but what did you understand about?
No, I didn't, I didn't hear the part, what they said.
They can, I consulted with them about using fund balance and they said it was okay. If that's something I wanna, you wanna do, that's fine, because of that, you know, we're above the level that. The median level that most municipalities are at in in the state, forty percent.
I think, you know, from that whole conversation, it seemed, you know, in our position, basically, it's okay either way. And they weren't going to really make a recommendation one way or the other, because now you're starting to get into like. Financial projections, are you guessing interest rates are gonna go in a certain direction or not, and they're not gonna, you know, step up and then. Give you a projection like that, that would be, they're stepping outside of their. Their role and or maybe even more irresponsible, so it's kinda up to us and sort of.
Correct, and yeah, so the projection they showed, they added a six hundred thousand. Uh, so over the life of the, the borrowing, it would cost us seven hundred ninety thousand, right? So that, that's the question, do you wanna potentially? Have that?
Was that on the first six hundred thousand cost, right?
The se- the second.
That was that depiction that they had up on there.
Okay, in the fifteen years, in the fifteen years, alright.
Correct.
Did they have anything to say about, you know, do we, do we ban them for a few years first or something?
It's an option, we, we, we can do that because then the ban, you know, you can pay back, like you did with the one with the paving.
So.
Yeah.
So, yeah, based upon tho- those numbers that they were putting up. So. And from a present value aspect of it, it's, you know, over the course of fifteen years, it's paying another.
Fifty, fifty so, fifty thousand dollars a year in debt service.
Fifteen years. Fifteen?
Fifty thousand per year. Fifty times fifteen.
Yeah.
Is about seven.
Seven hundred fifty thousand, yeah.
Yeah, well, seven ninety is what they had up on their screen, yeah.
Right, so what I'm saying is the co- what I'm saying is the six hundred thousand dollars to borrow. Costs us seven hundred ninety over fifteen years.
Right.
So in other words, from a present value and the, and paying it back. It's, it's basically another, you know. Twelve thirteen thousand dollars each year over the next fifteen to pay that back. So it's a pretty negligible cost.
Yes, cor- correct, right.
As opposed to taking a lump, six hundred thousand dollars. Or.
Right. Yeah, and and that's an option that we can, you know, we can go with.
Okay.
You know, my, my, you know, my take on it is, you know, we, we have the money. Why incur, even if it's twelve thousand a year, more than if you, you're, you're, you're taking from the fund balance?
I'm fine with that, I think, I think only. Um, well, a couple of questions, one, it was just like if you thought that interest rates were going up. Then. Then it may be not a bad idea to.
Yeah.
Yours might concern. Um. I think over the next. Year. We. To the end of this year anyway, um, we're gonna have to take into consideration that this town's gonna have to be. An enormous expenditure to relocate our town offices, our police department, and our court. Right, um, that is going to cost the town millions of dollars. To build the police station every, millions of dollars. On top of that, something that we don't get to determine this board, but the school board gets to determine is what they're going to do. With Lewis Borough Elementary School property. And whatever they decide to do with that property is gonna cost millions of dollars to do. So now. The tax, the school taxes are gonna go up significantly for them to do their project. At the same time that we are going to try to figure out. How to get, spend millions of dollars to get our infrastructure where we need it to be. So if we start diving into the fund balance. And I, I, you know, we have options, it doesn't have to be the full six hundred fourteen thousand dollars, we could take some from fund balance. We can ban the rest, we can, there's different ways to do it, but I don't wanna take a huge, start taking huge chunks. Out of fund balance when we don't know what's around the corner, we don't have. A really good picture of what's coming around the corner.
Well, around the corner, if we, we're gonna have to build something.
Yes.
Right? That's bonded, that's a forty year bond. But that's separate from this.
Well, in the time, on the timing aspect, there's two things, first of all, we're on track. If we take a little bit of time aside from just, here's a sheet, let's, you know, decide what we're gonna do, but we can take a meeting. And process it, because we.
Well, that was the meeting, the last meeting that we had was for us to process what was presented.
This, the sheet that was just given to us now?
Yeah.
Okay, well, what we heard during the presentation is that, first of all, the, the. Interest that we're paying is, goes down. This year is relatively high compared to next year.
No, it has a crystal ball, but.
No, but what the projections were significantly down twenty.
That's based on current, which you said the tick rate, yeah, that's current.
Right, well, what the charts are telling us, it's going down significantly twenty-five and then to twenty-six.
Our debt.
Our, our debt service is going down.
Yes.
You said interest.
Yeah.
Well, debt is, our interest is, that's what we pay, we're paying interest, right? Okay, to- alright. Total debt is going down. Twenty-six as opposed to twenty-five.
Which, which, which suits us well for. Infrastructure, long-term bonds.
Um, yeah, right, I mean, again, it's, that's, that's not saying anything different than what Andrew's bringing up, but. And also gonna hear from what, the audit is gonna be complete. In the next six or eight weeks, so we'll know exactly where we are for twenty-four. Cause that audit will be complete, right?
Right.
In the next six or eight weeks. So.
But that has no bearing on our future borrowing.
That's.
It has a bearing upon what our unupdated information as to what our surplus will be. Right, and and your proposal right now is to take surplus.
Right.
Which we'll know a little bit better in six or eight weeks, what are, more accurately, what are, what our surplus will be.
Right, which according to Annie, it should be similar or greater.
Right, and six or eight weeks, we'll actually know for sure, because the kind people that were here will have completed their work in auditing what's been done for twenty-four.
Eight months, we'll know what the next new fund balance, I mean, you know, we, we know what it is. And, but I'm curious, so.
But we're, we're, hold on, our goal here is for twenty-six to get this done, right?
Our goal is to get it started. Before the end of the year.
Right after Labor Day.
Right, Labor Day.
Right, so.
It opened for Memorial Day twenty-six.
Yeah.
So if we wait for a little information in six or eight weeks, if we're still way on track of what we have to do and making that deter- that determination, aren't we?
Right.
Yeah, but will that information actually change our decision making?
I don't know, we'll have that more, more information.
I mean, there's, you know, there's something occurring, like, it's nice to have adequate time to. Deploy this project, because you know, know what's gonna, gonna come up. I, I would, and I am curious though, this six hundred fourteen thousand as a percent of our, what we just talked about is the. Our fund balance, the fund balance is six.
Based on the twenty twenty-three year audit.
So was it fair to say this is about ten percent of that?
Uh, yeah.
Is that meaning that our fund balance would go down from forty, what did they say it was?
You mean, six and a half million, this percentage of that?
This as a percentage of the six and a half million.
It was a little bit less than ten percent of what it is.
Uh, below that, it would take a cent of the.
Right. And then. Yeah.
So we're, we're at forty something now, right, so this would take us down.
I thought she said we were at fifty percent.
Yeah, 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 you are completely right.
Again, is there any problem in waiting for a couple of meetings on this to see where we're at? We're totally on time with where we're going to do, and the only decision is whether, there's no time urgency that I'm aware of tonight. As to whether on the six hundred thousand, we decide tonight, I mean, we keep having that where literally we come to a meeting. Here's a presentation and we're making half a million dollars or more determination.
Well, this isn't, this, this was already shared with the board. And we discussed it at the prior meetings.
I know it's been, it's been discussed, but also we gotta.
No, but I'm just correcting your statement that it's not being thrown at you for the first time, you're not seeing this for the first time.
No, but what we did have this for the first time is that we did have a presentation.
Right.
From people as far as the financial health of it, and then at the close of that, when you gave this out, you said, hey, by the way, I had a conversation with those people who were here. It also would have been helpful to say, hey, while you guys are here, let me bring up the fact that we had a conversation. About this issue, what we're gonna talk about a little bit.
Well, they, they kinda did in that last slide that they shared with. The two million versus, or the two million versus four million. Over fifteen or thirty, I, I took that to mean. Planning for our infrastructure issue.
Okay, I, I. Yeah, I ma- I made my, I've been up to be redundant, I made my point, it's, we can, we can wait a little bit to get some more information. And there's absolutely no hurry as far as what we wanna do.
You wanna wait till June, when this is.
I think there was no, absolutely no benefit to waiting at this point, we don't have a crystal ball. We don't know whether, you know, rates are gonna be something different in the future, we know we have the balance now. We know that by using this balance now, we know at least we're gonna forego the interest cost that we would have paid. If we, if we bonded. So that's a good thing, I mean, between the, there is no like perfect answer to this, if you.
The, the, in answering your question, the benefit is having the audit complete, that's, that's the, that's the benefit.
So what, does Danny have a recommendation?
She's okay with this, she's okay with taking it from the fund balance. Yeah.
Okay.
No, she's like.
So just for the record. I don't wanna go with the cheaper route. I'm just putting it out there now, I'm telling you right now, with the restructuring, long-term maintenance wise, put the better roof on the building. And it will last longer.
I agree.
I'm, I'm putting it out there now, it has nothing to do with this discussion, we're talking about, I don't wanna save money when we're just concerned. Because we're gonna be sorry, long after I'm retired and a grandmother, I will be regretful. That the roof wasn't done the right way the first time, so.
Which we do the metal?
Correct, the metals, yes.
Which we heard about the thirty year.
Just making decision on this tonight, but I, I do have an issue with taking the full. Six hundred fourteen thousand dollars out of fund balance, I think we can do a hybrid, and I'm really much happier with that. Because it's really likely that if we take the rest out in a bank or whatever, that by next year, we just get rid of it and.
Right.
But we'll also know. By this time next year, how much more is gonna be on our plate and and how much more are we borrowing? But that, that's because I, I'm really concerned that there's gonna be emergency coming around the corner. Where we're gonna have to pay, whether it be, um, can we have to move our police department to trailers because there's nowhere else for them to go? Or something, we're gonna need that fund balance for something that's right around the corner, because LES is kicking us out. And we gotta figure it out, and you know what, we don't have lots of time to figure it out, and we're not.
But they're not kicking us, we're just kidding, they're not kicking us out. But anyway.
May, whatever language you use, we have. A lot on our plate in the. A lot on our plate in the future with the building of the bath house is falling apart.
Yes.
It's our responsibility to take care of what we've got and make it better for the future with proper moves involved. I like the idea of doing a combination of, of ban and.
It's a pretty negligible cost. Like I said, it's a hundred ninety thousand over fifteen years.
A ban would be five years, a ban, not a.
The interest in total interest, when we're talking about that, the time period? The seven ninety, well.
Yeah, it was, it was over fifteen.
Yes, fifteen years, six hundred thousand. Which we, our payback total cost, I thought you said was seven ninety over fifteen years.
Not exactly what it was.
Well, our fans can only go a little number five and then has to go to.
Yes, then you have to convert and go bond, and you could reissue every year. You have to reissue every year.
Yeah, right, so we had that option, you know, that, yeah.
So. Yeah, so it would be, yeah, twenty, so it's fifteen years.
So you wanna do a bond?
Fifty, no, 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 you, you don't wanna like it to a bond, that's.
That's why I was.
Because.
That's why I use the word ban.
Because the ban allows us to prepay it, so if we're in a position to prepay it, and if we have other.
If we get sponsorship or a grant.
Yeah.
Then it makes more sense.
Right, so this way with the ban, if we get, if someone decides to give us a hundred thousand dollars for the bath house. We can use that to pay down the ban or look back at our fund balance. Yeah.
Who is for a plan?
That's, I, I, I'm just more comfortable with that than taking the full. Six hundred and fourteen thousand dollars out of fund balance if we could ban for part of it and, and take part of it.
Right.
Out of fund balance, only because I, I really am apprehensive as to what we're gonna have to deal with. Not too far in the future, and I wanna be prepared for that emergency.
Okay, on that point, but that's what Andrew's, I, on that conceptual point, you're basically taking. Five or six hundred, well, six hundred thousand out of the bank account in one false school.
No, not in one false school. It's, it's when the voices come in, and then hopefully we're gonna be able to be successful.
And when they, when they come, well, when they come in, it's, it's, it's Labor Day, so, well. We're almost in April, and in Labor Day, five months from now, a hundred fifty days from now, they're gonna, bills are gonna start coming in, and the target is May of twenty-sixth, Memorial Day, right?
Right.
So, in the next year.
There's gonna be change orders. This is construction. I am not optimistic that we're gonna keep it under cost. I'm pretty optimistic that there's gonna be change order, there's gonna be.
I'd have to look at the bid spec, but I think the bid spec didn't allow change orders, but.
Okay, speaking about bid spec though, um, the first bid opening was January fifteenth. So we do have to award a contractor, the general contractor within ninety days. So we are creeping up.
January.
The pencil go away.
Yeah.
Correct.
That has to be on the next agenda. We have to.
Well.
We have to award.
What, can we award it tonight?
We could award it tonight and then.
And the timber frame.
Of funding.
Did we get the, the meeting? They've got the channel frame?
Yes, there.
It's.
The costs are on, on the spreadsheet.
I hate just. Funding, adding things, trying to pass pursuing.
Yeah.
Do you hate what?
I hate sponsoring, like adding things to generate special or. Doing something important that, that isn't on the agenda, you know, you're just kinda throwing it all in there. It all has to get done.
If you, so let me ask very good question. So let's say we approve the project now, you still have, we have to go through a bond resolution. Process.
Ban.
On the band.
On the G, on the general contract. It's, it's two parts, the general and the timber. When Nicole's talking about is the general one, that the bids are going to expire. The day after your next meeting.
Correct.
So if you, when you award that bid, then the bidder gets the notice of award. They then have to send bonds, performance bonds, labor material bonds for need a review.
Right.
Before the contract gets signed, and we have to get him a notice of award. Uh, notice to proceed before that date. So on the general one. You're in a position where you could lose the bits if you wait till. Uh, the timber frame bids were re, resettled. Therein, there's an analysis of.
February twenty-eighth, so we.
Right, so you have some time on those. Okay.
Alright, so now I'm just. Sorry, Tony. It should have been on tonight's agenda, so that everybody knew it was on tonight's agenda, and I just, I, I mean, I don't have a.
Wait, it should have been on tonight's agenda.
It should have been. Because now we know that by waiting until the next meeting, right, we're cutting it way too short and, and it's not gonna happen currently, right? So it would have been better planning had it been on tonight's agenda, so everybody could know that we were discussing and going to decide. That's all. It just, you know, it's, now it's like feet to the fire again.
Well, it's not feet, I mean, we, we talked about this last meeting and, 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 and what we concluded is that the next meeting, meaning this one, we would make a decision.
Right, but then you would have put, if that was the case, you would have put it on the agenda that you created. We're talking agenda that we're voting on just contractor. Where does it say that?
Well, it does say voting, yeah, it does say voting in the bid, but it's, it's.
Close enough.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Close enough.
It was close enough.
It says.
Bathhouse.
The bathhouse bits.
Okay, so, okay, so where are we with that?
Our lowest bidder was.
ADI.
ADI.
There's only, there's only a limited number of contractors, contractors that do decide to sign the funding, right?
So, this is just general, it's not timber frame.
Okay.
Correct.
This is the GC.
He was the low bidder on the GC, the general contractor.
It's.
And who reviewed the, the bill, it was like.
Darren and Greg.
And Greg.
Yeah.
So, so I guess we have to. We should motion to award the bid, the general contract. Should we do the timber frame as well? Might as well do them both, right?
We don't have to.
I don't even know where the timber frame at, because the board's having. Analysis, I mean, there's a new set of bits.
Respectfully, since you just do the.
Well, we tripped it off from where we were talking about funding aspect of it, right? So we're, now we're talking about, we just, we're gonna miss something. We just went to approving the GC. Before we decided how we're paying the balance as far as.
Yeah, we can't make that decision.
Before you sign the contract.
Before you sign the contract.
Yeah, having funded.
Yeah.
So we can approve the GC and then decide how to have a funding.
Still sign the contract and pursue the, the ban.
All you have to do is recover the money for the contract. If they pursue the ban as, as part of finance, that's fine, but you're gonna, you recover your reserves.
Right.
One way or another to do it in order to authorize the execution of the contract.
So it's more of a priority to approve the GC tonight than it is to approve the funding. Fair enough, desire?
Oh, absolutely. If you want the project done and you don't wanna go back to your bid.
May I? I know, we have approved the um ADI. East as the general contractor for the bath house renovations at Towne Park in Lewisboro. Yeah, please.
At a cost not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, subject to review of performance bonds and labor material bonds by council.
And insurance.
Insurance.
That's stated by council.
Second.
Discussion.
So that now we're just gonna be determining how we're gonna pay for that.
In the next step.
Right.
Yes, it's just a GC.
Okay.
This is, and obviously this is a little call.
Absolutely. Okay, Mary.
Mary Shaw, hi.
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi.
Bye.
Bye. Congratulations.
ADI.
Yes.
Progress.
Progress.
Okay.
The twenty something years.
More than that.
Sorry.
Metal roof.
I'm, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Okay.
No.
So now the, the funding piece.
I say we wait.
I just, I just.
When we do a hybrid.
Let's wait, let, let's wait, I'm, I'm, we're, we're gonna.
She'll be happy.
We'll discuss with Annie.
Semi happy right now.
Yeah, I mean, both happy, it's been awarded, right, so. But we'll talk to Annie.
Okay.
And I'll let her give her opinion to the board.
But my, uh, it's, it's in relative, again, back to my macro.
One.
I don't know, but just by, though leaving it, well, it's fine, I just, for context here, back to my macro planning aspect based upon what was being discussed here. We should leave as much. Money, cash as it were, on the table before we figure out what our. Costs are going to be for all these relatively short-term decisions we're gonna have to make. And if we take a half a million off the table, or we take a million off the table, then that is.
But when you say short-term decisions, like what additional decisions?
As far as what we're gonna do, all the things that we were talking about, as far as police headquarters, as far as anything like that.
That's not cash.
What's that?
That's not full cash.
Where's it gonna come from? If we have to put them in a temporary facility, where's it coming from?
Oh, that, that piece, yes, the temporary.
Where, where are we putting our, where are we putting our offices temporarily, and so we build a structure that, that those are the things that are right around the corner?
But that could be borrowing.
It could be.
Yeah.
Depending on how quickly we have to move, which we don't know, because the school district isn't telling us anything.
Right.
That's really helpful right now.
Right, we also won't be paying the rent, I hope.
But we'll be paying rent somewhere.
Yeah, right, so.
There was an old.
A hundred percent additional cost.
Yeah, that's, that's still, yeah.
There was an old commercial, nothing feels better than money in the bank, so why don't we leave it in there for a little bit? And figure out where we're.
Sure, we put money in the bank until it's ready. Right? Okay, then, so we'll. Okay, good. Uh, next, uh, uh, this is a resolution for a fundraiser at Lewisboro Town Park for the Rayer event, um, and wave the fees.
So moved.
Second.
In a question, all in favor?
Ah.
The next one is an approval for Connecticut Rush Soccer, uh, for the usage of Bon True Park, Bon Park. And this was only via agenda package, so. Discussion.
Second.
Second, sorry, discussion, all in favor?
Ah.
Next is, uh, for the fundraiser at Vista Park for the Vista Hall and Stewardship Council, Egg Hunt and Wave the Peas.
I moved. Second.
Discussion.
Just quick, um. This, I've heard from a couple of people about getting a swing in that park or two at some point. Maybe, Nicole?
Requesting. For Nicole.
Okay.
Yeah, great.
We need to vote on this.
Yes, yeah, we did.
I didn't say I.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, next, the resolution for where, that's where I can do that one right now, right here, um.
Are we gonna change?
We're gonna do that for that discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have, next is, uh, the application for the Sam, uh, Sam Grant. Um, for the Towne Park Pickleball courts. Um, that's a, a hundred twenty-five thousand dollar grant, that's a, um, grant from one of our state representatives. Um, and if you recall, this was money that we originally were gonna use to purchase vehicles. But because we were, we had, uh, closed out the ARFAS stuff, the ARFAS funds, uh, and, and their appropriation by the end of the year. We decided to.
Use the ARFAS funds for the vehicles.
Vehicles, and now we're substituting, which the state reps have approved, and we're just going through the application process. So this is just a formal approval for us to go through this initial application process for that grant. There's actually two of them. A hundred twenty-five thousand, but we'll go down with first, so I'd like to go ahead and motion that we, um. Approve a fine.
Now, what's second? No.
We have a second, then we'll go to discussion.
Now you go to discussion.
Who's second? Did you second? Okay, discussion?
Now. In the priority of things, how long do we have to use this grant money if we make the application and we deadline?
It's gonna take several months. But just based on past history.
What's a window to use it?
Can you use it? Three years after the grant agreement is executed? Yeah.
Okay.
For the discussion?
This is just so, so we got a total of two hundred twenty-five thousand, this and the next one that we're. Gonna be able to get towards this.
Correct. And then we're looking at, um. There's a grant, the BEC grant that we're gonna be, uh, that just opened up. And if we're successful with that, uh, Pickleball cost us zero. So. That's in the words.
It's a good grant teaser, so we have motion to second, oh, we're up to that one, the one, Bill.
Yeah, so.
One twenty-five, one.
So the one twenty-five on, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, the next one is a hundred thousand dollar. Uh, that's a crest grant, which is also a state grant for the pickleball.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Just so our friends at home know that SAM means state and municipal. Facilities program grant and Crest is community resiliency. Uh, economic sustainability and technology program grant.
See, that sounds.
I, I would not be able to at this hour.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, all in favor?
Hi.
Alright.
Um. So next, we have a resolution appointing Joseph. My pronouncer, Akana?
Uh huh.
Yeah. Akana as a, uh, Louisville representative to thrive.
And our folks at home, Thrive is a coalition of Bedford, Lewisboro and Pound Ridge. It's like drug use prevention and mental wellness promotion for, um. Fellow residents in middle school and high school, and hoping to expand it in future. For children of all ages.
Yeah, it's a great program. Substance abuse in general, not just drugs.
It, it's, yes, substance use prevention and, and it's a lot of education. And engagement with the students, and right now I think we're up to thirty-five student ambassadors, so really. Rolling my lung. And Joe, having been, is a coach, uh, for cross, cross-country and track and field. And would be well suited. As a.
Yeah. So.
Great.
I, I move second.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Alright.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Um, okay, next item is the, uh, the KSTJ proposal, uh, which is the, um. That's, it's in the agenda packet as well, but this is a proposal for. The stormwater, uh. Plan, stormwater, it's called the SWIFT plan, that's a stormwater pollution prevention plan. Just to give you a little, and, and the permitting that's required with, um. BEC and DEP, so just to give you a little history, some of it was presented by some of the comments, um, we've, this has been. Uh, the paving of these roads has been on our paving list for, for years, uh, when Peter Ripperger was here, it was being considered, uh, we didn't have the budget for it. And we had other priorities, uh, so it, it, it never got, it never got paved. So with the new paving budget, uh, we decided, when I say we, it's John Winter, decided we should go ahead and include this. Uh, but then we found out that because it's in the watershed, uh, in New York City DEP, and it states that here. Uh, in the contract, they require this SWIFT plan. Um, and it says, I'll just read the section here. Uh, the paving of, of existing dirt and gravel roads, initially we thought we couldn't pay them at all. Uh, and when we had initial discussions, when I say we, Keller Sessions had initial discussions with DEP. But then after further investigation by DEP, they came back and they said that it will require permitting from both DEP and the BEC. Um, and DEP confirmed that a variance from the DEP rules and regulations is not required.[1640.98] Uh, however, the D E P will need to review and approve the stormwater prevention plan. So that's what this is for, um, with. You know, some of our paving that we do, we always do stormwater work, there's new catch bases, there's new piping that's installed. Uh, it wasn't that easy here because of the D E P and D E C, the other challenge is the fact that. We don't have, uh, the right of way because of the, the narrow roads. They're town roads, but we don't have enough room for, in some cases, for some of the infrastructure that has to go away.
So how are we going to thoroughly overcome any of that legality?
So that's what we, I spoke earlier to, to Greg, um, and.
I spoke to Ian.
Yeah, that's what Kelly Sessions says specifically.
That, that John Winter had said that he'd spoken at length with Jerry, who I think is still here, about this issue, so we want to make sure if we're gonna do it, that you're legally.
Correct, right.
Able to do it.
Yeah.
Right, so the, the thing you need to have is the scope of what needs to be done. In terms of actual installation of stormwater mitigation measures. And you can't determine that until after Kelly Sessions does their investigation and, and their own permitting process. It's not out of the question. That. As I'm advised, that the improvements can go. Within and beneath the existing traveled way. It's not entirely likely that they'll be exclusively there, you may need more property. But if that's the case, and when the design comes out, you'll figure out where. Those particular areas are where you either have facilities or point discharge, whether it belongs to an HOA or whether it belongs to individuals. Individual property owners, at that point, they have to acquire easements or fee interests so that you can install the facilities.
So the original plan, and this is a little bit of different issues, so the original plan when Colony was formed, there was nothing as, when it was. Community was established, I guess, but nineteen twenty-seven would be a hundred years, that there was nothing putting in there. Easement type of things for the community?
There's a nineteen seventy takings of, of the road beds by the town, some from fifty-five years ago.
Was it taken or that was a dedication?
Dedication.
Yeah.
It's not, it wasn't an acquisition, it was dedication.
The plan was to have and keep dirt roads eventually. That's the way, I mean, there's a lot of people in town that love the dirt roads that they live on, and that's why, that they don't want to pave their entire neighborhood, so now it's just.
Because, yeah, then the question becomes, and, and going forward with the project, there is no right of way, and then. Whatever, an individual homeowner with their lot, any kind of damage or any kind of issue, who's going to address that?
You're, you're gonna have to acquire the property interest to, to do the physical improvements.
And this is only, I'm probably wrong, Jeremy, but this is only the entrances, right, so there's limited number of homes on. Uh, the.
Yeah.
And the good news is that.
And are we to understand that the, the homes that potentially would be affected are willing to give up. Whatever interest in their properties to.
I'd ask Jeremy, maybe, maybe we allow Jeremy to come up and, like, because I, I, my understanding is that, yes, there's.
I mean, they have an interest in getting it done because they're the ones.
They're the ones that are complaining.
Especially after COVID, that's, you know, with all the dust and all the.
I know, it's easy to say, it's easy, how much is gonna be needed on the property, and then.
Well, then, on that.
But that's what, but we don't, but we don't know what is.
Right.
That entails until the study is done. So rather than go with worst-case scenario, my suggestion is that.
It's, it's, I might know if it's worst case, but what it sounds to me, if, if it's a limited number of people that are affected. Which is fine, then it's a finite amount of people that you just address those specific property owners, if they're okay. With having whatever easement or right-of-way rights they need in order to do the project, then. Then the engineering question mark is no longer a question mark, because the people directly affected, which you know based upon the scope of the project, the limited number of homeowners. You can essentially have a pretty straightforward agreement that they're gonna, in exchange for have the benefit of having that paved. They're gonna provide whatever access they need, referable to easement or right-of-way for the construction or whatever else, and then it's covered, especially when it's a finite amount, not the whole neighborhood.
And if I was listening correctly, I heard from Jeremy that the entire group. Discussed at length and decided as a whole that this is something that they would advocate.
Yeah, that's all commute, but what I'm saying, it's, in, in a way, it's an easier, it's an easier thing, if eighty-two percent are, or, or support the whole project or whatever it was. But let's say it's, so we got the entrance, so assuming it's what, six or eight or ten. Homeowners, then those people, then everything could be worked out, so when, so it's irrelevant how the engineering comes back, whether they could put it below the road bed. Or they have to access and go into a right-of-way, either way it's covered.
Well, ultimately, you would need agreements, like easement agreements, and so the best you'd be getting, there, there are no idea, I'm, I'm interested, and like. We, we still need that engineering, because you don't know, maybe there's gonna be like, there has to be this storm sector put on, you know, some. Which is more, more major than we knew about, so I'm not sure how. Much commitment you're gonna actually get from these residents, and more than their general like, oh, yeah.
No, the max, the maximum that you need, for example, from an engineering foreseeability standpoint, let's say at most you're gonna need eight or ten. Feet of right-of-way, you get that in place, and if it turns out you don't need it, then you don't need it, otherwise everything's in place legally to do whatever work is gonna be done.
Okay, so before we can even go and determine what we need as far as legality goes, the study has to be done. And this is a project that's been put on the back burner, it's been on the list of things to pay.
The pa, the paving has been on this for, for, it wasn't until last year that we knew that we needed to get, that we found out we needed to get the E C and the E P permitting, and. And after we even allow paving, because initially it said, no, you can't pave.
I, I'm fine as long as that I know the statement's back, and so this is what we have to do, um, we overcome the legalities and the right-of-ways we have.
Why did they initially say it couldn't be, at all?
Because of the, the proximity to the lake, to the lake.
Yeah, the waters, the waters, in the watershed.
Yeah, it's in the watershed.
And it's in the watershed.
So why wasn't that discussed over, why wasn't that, that was not learned over the prior years?
No, it was, well, eventually, when we said, okay, we're ready to pave, we have some budget money, but then when we found that, we went to the E P. Or Kelly Sessions did, and the E P said, no, sorry, can't pave there. That was the initial.
So first we thought we couldn't do it.
No, we checked that out before, okay.
Okay. Well, we didn't have, we weren't planning on paving before that, because we didn't have budget for it. Once the budget was allocated, that's when we started the.
Prioritizing the roads.
Yeah.
Got it.
Right.
Alright, alright. Good. So. I noticed that we approved the. K S C J proposal for the Timber Lake. Paving, that's not the paving, it's the.
It's, it's the, uh, the engineering services permitting, just stronger.
Pollution.
Pollution intervention plan.
The SWIFT plan, the SWIFT, engineer associated. Internet, that's what exceed thirty thousand dollars.
That's set forth within their proposal.
Yeah. That's correct.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
All in.
All in. Mary?
Mary Shaw, aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye, Rich?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Um. Next, we have, uh, we have an N S four report, the annual report into progress certification for the rising supervisor assignment, so this is.
So move.
Gonna be posted on the website, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
This is the one we get periodically.
The next one is the, yeah, correct, that's what it's called, annual.
Oh, it's, I see.
The next one is the.
It's a semi.
Semi annual.
There, there's two.
Two, you're right.
This is the annual.
This is the annual one, but then there's a.
Semi.
Yeah. Um.
I'd like to get your interest.
So next is a resolution approving the renewal of license for wind waste. It's, uh, slide twenty-nine, collecting disposal rates of these air recyclables. Discussion, uh, second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Jen, um, yeah, just one quick question, they, their entrances, as to.
I would, I would say the same thing, as long as, of having, having a, you know, a significant insurance.
Yep, yep.
That's all part of it.
But just.
The plan, it's not fair, it's just like a verbal. Convention.
Uh, next is the.
So, do we vote for that?
No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next is, uh, uh, the license for a right-of-way, this is for a, um. A, a wall that was built, um, it's in the agenda packet, two twenty-nine, Kitchwan Road. And, um, it's encroaching in the town's right-of-way, we had the highway superintendent take a look at it. Uh, we didn't have an issue with it because it's still, it's set back far enough, um, that it won't impede any plowing or anything like that. Um.
Any sightline issues?
No.
You said you think it would not be worth it.
I drove past the, and, and I, I was, I was wondering when they were installing the wall as to whether or not they had a permit, but I didn't call and report anybody, and it looks pretty, and. It'd be nice if they followed the rules and got a permit, because it was pretty obvious in your face that they were doing it.
And it's not like right up against.
No, it's, um, so when you go down Kitchwan Road, but it's kind of windy, and when you go around the curve, it's, it's up, there's a lot, there's like a rock cropping, and then when you get to their property. Um, the wall is set back, but it's up high, the cloud can't, it doesn't even come close to hitting the wall.
So firsthand, you know, there's no safety or sightline issues.
Fine, this is how it.
Honestly.
About council's.
Okay, so. And, and, uh, Greg, he reviewed the, uh, the license agreement, and so.
Yeah, it has, uh, identification and insurance provisions, and they can expand it, um, and will importantly. It's not gonna interfere, interfere with your, your highway maintenance, any road lining that you may need in the future, uh.
Yeah.
John was okay with that, so.
And for our friends at home, please don't do this, uh, this is proper.
Please follow the rules, let's not, you know, take a chance, and now the school buses can't even, school buses go up that road and it won't. Come anywhere you want.
We're building a wall.
Got a charmette.
Yeah.
Bill, what's the resolution, is there an address or something?
Yes, two, two twenty, yeah, so the resolution is, um, uh, to, uh, who, well, actually someone's got a resident supervisor signed.
Yeah.
The approvals. The license agreement. To sign the license agreement, uh. Oh.
Two twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, Kitchwan Road, South San On. Uh, as presented.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain since I'm signing. Um, okay, so next we have Papa Tom in number two for the new business side, is there anybody in here that can say anything? Smaller trial.
Everyone's gonna start leaving.
How about on Zoom?
Yes. Um, Barbara, may I ask you out on asking you from you?
How was that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, um, I, I would like to know from the board. Where the thirty thousand dollar engineering fees are coming from in our budget. Uh, since it's not, that is not paving, the paving is extra, I, I did ask the board to clarify that on the agenda. That went out to people, but that wasn't done, uh, because information was in the attachments, but. I think it could have been a little clearer on the first page of the agenda. That this was a fee over and above whatever the paving is gonna cost, so as a resident, I would like to know where you're taking that thirty thousand dollars from. And I also just want to say, um, and I have written before on this, not, not recently, that the board really has to abide by their rules, um. At the last board meeting, you allowed a back and forth between some members of the community and the board, um, and tonight you allowed somebody to come up and rebut something that somebody else said. Um, and that is not in accordance with the rules, and it, it constantly happens sporadically. And, and I don't think it's fair, especially the, to those of us on Zoom, in this particular case, this man was rebutting something someone said on Zoom. And that person on Zoom couldn't say something back, so, um, you either have no rules, or you abide by the rules that you have put in effect, thank you.
Barbara.
Yes.
Uh, yes, um, Simone, I'm asking you, John, you?
Perfect segue, thank you, Barbara. I shouldn't have to equate healthy drinking water with dust on a road. Clean water in every case wins, Tony, again, you had a rule that people don't respond to other speakers, but again. You allowed it, perhaps because it was to me, I don't know. Um, but either you have a rule or you don't have a rule, I'm a rule follower. You apparently are not, but you do like making them. I feel terrible that when a car drives by, it creates dust, and it bothers a few homes at the entrance of a place called The Colony, which I've never heard from, sounds like a very elitist little place. But every single time someone drinks water, bathes, cooks, or washes their hands, they have an issue. The speaker who decided the water issue that doesn't affect him or his loved ones is not as important. As his dusty road issue, makes it harder for me and others to feign horror. At his dust issue when a car drives by and he's standing outside. I began by feeling empathy and concern, but questioned where the money was coming from, which I'd still like to know. I compared it to Oak Ridge, being responsible for Oak Ridge along with grants, and it ended with him. Effectively making me as concerned for his dust issue as he is with hundreds of people, young and old, drinking poisonous water for decades. It really, really is offensive to me that a group of people come and strong-arm. You by telling you you're gonna vote, and I heard that you're not gonna vote, and then you do vote, you give them everything they want, they walk out in, as soon as they get it. And leave everybody else in the dust, thank you.
Thank you, Simone. Carol Sernak, I'm asking you, John, you?
Hi, Carol Sernak, um, South Salem, New York. I would definitely agree with what Barbara said about. Several issues she talked about, and also about Simone. I don't understand how you equate dirt roads to poisonous drinking water. Um. It's a big problem, there was recently a New York State article issued about, uh, PFAS. Or PFOS, I don't know how you pronounce it. Um, urging everybody in our county, or in our town with wells to get, um. Tested, so I think you need to, you know, skip a couple of things and focus more on other things. It doesn't seem to make sense, and not for the well-being of our town, thank you.
Thank you, Carol. And that's it, Johnny?
Okay, great, thanks, John. Uh, next is approval of claims, I'd like to go ahead and motion, um, that we approve. Uh, second.
It's just.
Second, discussion?
Question on one, the, I saw seven one two two nine, there was sixty-six hundred for recycling bins, seeing any idea what that was? Maybe somebody could let me know. I don't know, no, no.
It's.
Recyclable cans for the parks.
I'm sorry?
I just, it's recyclable cans for the parks.
Okay. It was, yeah, seven one two two nine, it was.
Should say the park's direct, right?
Just saw the number, sorry, seven one two two nine.
That's true.
So.
Thank you.
Well, there was, there was a Granger one, that was a different one, but just, just that one, it just seemed, I think there were about twelve of them, so that's about right.
Spots within the parks where people want to start recycling.
No, it just, it just seemed like a lot of, you know, five hundred bucks, okay, if that's what it is.
Legal requirement that we have not been meeting.
Those bins and the garbage bins are not cheap.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Good one.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Seven.
I think very, very good, yeah.
Thank you.
Um.
We're having so much fun.
Calling in the board, from Rich.
Okay. Um. First, just want to let, um. Community know I've been trying to, uh, invite Congressman Lawler to a town board meeting, uh, to come. See his, uh, some of his constituents in person, have the, have a dialogue with us, um. So I've been, uh. Trying since, um. Beginning of, uh, the month. Actually, so first I went over to his, uh, office in Pearl River, and I spoke with his district, um. Director, uh, Rafi, and then. Got communication with his scheduler, Ava Verzani. And, um. So I wrote to Ava on Friday, did a follow-up since I hadn't heard back from her since March tenth. Wanted to finalize board agendas in April. Um, and it just said in part, we're certain that our congressman wants the opportunity as an elected federal official to meet and speak in person with his constituents. Who are our constituents as well, of course, in Lewisboro, about issues of importance to the community. So I'm gonna keep, uh, keep on keeping on, and I think it's important that, uh. Our congressman, uh, be in the community, come out in person and, uh, speak to the, uh. Citizens about issues of importance, and there are many. Today. Um, that's, that's that, um, second item. Um, in, Tony, you sent out a, a email blast back on March second with the NICEG information, just wanted to point out, as I have in the past. Um, there are ESCOs that are available, people can go out in the marketplace, I just want to make sure that's clear, you can go, and I get it on my phone. Powersetter.com, so anyone can go out if they want, and I've said this for a long time, if they want a, a fixed rate, um, option. That may work for them, please go to powersetter.com. And come to your phone, you can check on that to make sure that, uh, everybody in the community, uh, can do what's best for them, both short, medium, short, medium, and long-term.
Good.
Um, you know, I, I'm usually the one that asks when we expect money for a funding source, and I'm afraid that we should probably designate a funding source on that, I'm assuming it's coming from fund balance, but.
Oh, for.
For the thirty thousand dollars.
Yes, it'll come from fund balance.
Okay, so that answers everybody's question, I know, that's where I assumed it was coming from, and they're right, we should designate a funding source, so. For all.
I just note, though, I mean, every time we, we construct a road, there's soft costs that we often don't. I don't know. Talk about, there's the, the work we do, you know, so this is not actually that unusual.
Yeah, we, we, we actually just, it's adds that we have, um, what's in there, Road Chapel, Road Chapel. So we've been waiting for a while for permitting on that, and Kelly Sessions is doing that.
Yeah.
Um, but that's, you know, smaller scale, uh, but it's still a permitting process that they do on our behalf. Um, but.
All I said was that we should designate the funding source like we do every time we spend money, that's all.
But the funding source, yeah, and, and so when highway does pave a road, they, uh, in some cases, there, there is stormwater, there's new catch bases, new drainage. That's not in the paving budget, that comes out of a separate paving line, or a separate, uh, line that they have for, uh, materials, um, for that.
So is, is this, is this gonna be part of your poll, like, that's all I said was we needed to designate a source. We're getting, we're getting on a digression here, that's all, that's all I had to say.
Right. Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, yeah. But you're right, the source is the, the, the fund balance, right?
Thanks.
Yeah, Mary?
Um, I attended a webinar that was set up by Senator Harpum on NICEG and CONED raids. And, um, got in link to it, I'm going to ask permission from his office that we be able to post it. A link to the, what they call blog presentation, that was almost covered by half. Um, it was, it had a lot of useful information. Um, it was, it had a lot of useful information if people are having problems with their um bills and how to uh advocate for yourself. Um, also, the um Lewisboro Land Trust and is is having a a number of events coming up. Please check their website. And John Jay Trails is having their first big race of the season, or maybe it's the second one at this point, uh on April sixth uh at nine AM. So um it's not too late to register for that and become one with me. And um uh if you haven't changed your batteries for your butt smoke detector and your C R detector at home uh with the changing of the clock, please make sure that you do that.
Thank you, yeah.
Um, you and I were at the Goldsbridge Hamlet meeting the other day, discussing the uh pedestrian enhancements, and they've got a whole sort of punch list of uh things to uh to work on, so I'm sure we'd hear more about that going forward. I would thank you, Rich, for for pursuing Congressman Law Lawler and seeing if we could get him here. There's a a whole lot of stuff that um all our neighbors are really concerned about, cuts to the V A.
Yes.
Right? And I'll say, uh Congressman Lawler did step up with George Latimer about the closing of the Social Security Office, and that was good. But this is happening nationwide too, and he's part of the federal government, so I hope, you know, but this is a broader issue, even if it's our our office. There's been drastic cuts to the federal workforce, which I've had neighbors come and they they lost their job. But listen, they've been, you know, not very measured and not not studied cuts. And even some very, very serious, so why is concerned? So I'd I'd really love to have him come here and give his uh his take on what's going on, what's what he's doing to help keep things uh where they need to be, so. For working on that.
Thanks, Ed. Okay, the only thing I have is um a couple of weeks ago, we had, uh this was a message shared with me regarding our our police department, and this was uh one of our officers, Art Turboliard. Um who helped a resident's son who was an offender vendor around eight thirty AM at the corner of one twenty-one and thirty-five. Uh, the young man was sent to John Jay High School where he is a student. Uh, luckily, no one was hurt seriously, but it was upsetting to the student, and the officer uh was very kind, thoughtful, reassuring, and helpful. Uh, so the family extended their thanks to the Louisville PD. Um, and they asked if this information be relayed to the chief, which it was. So thank you, Officer Turboliard.
Turboliard.
Turboliard, Turboliard, it's a tough uncle. He's, he actually helped me with a, I was locked out of my car
Yeah.
once, so he he's great. And and there was another compliment about him, I I looked up my emails a little while back. Um, yeah, it could be upsetting when you're, you know, I remember when I was sixteen years old, my first car accident. Uh, it was very upsetting, especially when it was a police car that I ran into.
Nice job, Tony.
But it wasn't my fault.
It's upsetting at any age. I think we should agree.
Sorry. Sorry.
That was my first accident at sixteen years old. I couldn't believe this.
You have any other announcements to make?
No, that's it. That's it. So, yeah, the only other announcement is uh the next town board meeting is Monday, April fourteenth at seven thirty PM here at the Townhouse, eleven Main Street, South Salem. Uh, so now I'd like to go ahead, I'll motion to go into executive sessions to um discuss committee appointments uh with state um and personnel issues.
Great.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. There.
Second discussion, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, thanks, everyone, uh for attending.
Mm-hmm.